Okay.
All right, so no one's, no one signed up for public participation?
We have one hand raised.
Okay.
Hi all, yeah, we just have one hand raised, so Lynn Segal, please go ahead, you have three minutes, are you ready with the timer, Amanda?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead Lynn.
Yeah, I'm still kind of rocking what Steve Palmeran said in his, in his discussion of the residential growth management issue that was repealed and you know, it's never stopped us, as he would say, there would be 4,000 affordable units available per year if we went to the maximum of 40 per development. And and that's really something I hadn't realized, Steve always opens my eyes to things, I'm glad for a lot of affordable housing, but considering this limit has never been established on affordable housing, the question is, why don't we have more affordable housing in Boulder? And the only thing I can guess is that we really want to maintain what we've said there should be, which is 25% effectively with inclusionary housing and not meeting the jobs housing imbalance and or having, you know, having impact fees on the developers. So effectively, what's happening is that we're getting these affordable developments from Y tech funds and from the feds that are pushing growth and now Jared's pushing growth all the way from the bottom up, you know, the states. So this is really, I mean, it might not be so bad that the residential growth management was repealed, although I oppose that repealing it, but the fact that there's not going to be much effect of it implores me more than ever for you to say that we need to do impact fees, we need to get a reasonable 140% or more inclusionary housing. We need to tame this, this thing, or you know what, this Virginia, this 90-year-old woman that died on Alpine and Broadway, you're going to have blood on your hands like Netanyahu with the kind of excessive growth and density that's going to happen in Boulder as a result of Jared Polis and his growth propositions, you know, from ADUs and triplexes on every corner and all of this, this intensity of use, because people are the victims too, people 90 years old and she couldn't make it to a natural death, that's just stunning. And do something about dark horse, recommend to council that it be landmarked. No development of
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, anyone else?
No other hands raised, no.
Okay, all right, if we had minutes to approve, this would be when we would do it and we have none. Now we would be doing dispositions, call-ups and continuations and we have none. This is now when we'd be having a public hearing and we don't have any public hearing items. So we're going to go straight to matters, in this case, process streamlining, process streamlining code changes introduction, and I've been asked to remind everyone that this is your opportunity to register concerns and suggestions, it will be much harder to make changes when the staff comes back to us with a full ordinance. Yes, sir.
If I may start before Carl and Lisa jump in, with your permission?
Of course.
Thank you. Well, good evening, planning board members, we appreciate the opportunity to bring this item before you, I wanted to just provide a little context, both on the department's half and myself personally. I don't know how much we've bailed at this for you, especially recently, but the department and the city overall undertook a review of its business practices about three years ago. There was a report called the Tipton Report, some of you may have heard about or know about, there was a subsequent project called the Big Project, adequately.
As differentiated from the small project.
As opposed to the small project, yeah. It had elements that were called Design the Future, so very comprehensive look at much of what we do, including creating the department, the department did not exist three years ago in the way that we know it today. And I've been a part of that journey, of course, but not at the beginning of it, but very much understood the rationale and supported that, which was basically, we need to be aware that the world was changing, move to electronics, cementals, create other options, the pandemic kind of fast forwarded us into that in a way that we weren't completely prepared for, but we were frankly more prepared than many jurisdictions and were able to, you know, pivot relatively quickly to accommodate that, but it didn't represent our full implementation of that, we've been really doing that since then. A lot of that has been designed to provide more predictability for the public and just operational excellence, in fact, I've really complimented the city that when my position was posted a year and a half ago, they were looking for somebody who could simplify things and provide operational excellence and despite that, they hired me. But so I've taken that to heart and that really is, I think, a responsibility of good governance, it's responsibility of using taxpayers' dollars in an efficient, wise way, and it's frankly what the public expects of modern government and, you know, we've been aspiring to that ever since then, we don't have 100% right, there have been some criticisms in the press that were warranted based certainly on older information somewhat, some of that's been wrong, but we do recognize that we continue to provide process improvement, including tweaking in-office hours and when people can meet with us and what it looks like to interface online and those types of things, so just the broader context is we recognize we have a responsibility to provide good governance and that's a commitment that we've made. For tonight's purposes, I wanted to give you the context of a conversation that I had with council last year about this time as part of their annual retreat, we had brought forward, or I had brought forward as one of the updates, because we were giving updates on things broad and narrow about the processing improvements we had made and were making and the plans for doing that, and council has been curious about that and wanting to hold us accountable as they should, in the context of that conversation, though, they said, you know, it's our observation that there are probably things in the code that dictate timeframes, you know, they say X amount of things should happen or certain things should be brought forward in that, and I said, well, you know, of course, that's absolutely true, that represents the sturdy guardrails that the public and prior council members have laid out to manage that, but it is different in each jurisdiction and there's a different threshold for every jurisdiction, they said, well, we are giving you permission to go and bring us a list of things that we could consider to potentially lessen those, those requirements where appropriate, maybe the guardrails have already been established so long that, that the way they were envisioned aren't needed, or we've got different guardrails in place, design guidelines where we didn't have them, those types of things. So I said, sure, we'll, we'll be happy to do that, I'll be back in about a year and went to council and, or went to staff and said, hey, we've been given, they've opened the door to say, we can look at this, would you be able to do that? And they said, well, yeah, we already have the list. Like, well, okay, that, that doesn't surprise me, because I know as I've done this for years and more in, you know, practicing and doing development review and those types of things myself, I always kept a list of the little things that were problematic, which maybe are small incidental things, which we've got another set of those coming to you at some point, but also the things that are like, is this really relevant anymore and what is that, and so staff really did affirm what I, I kind of suspected already is that we've been hearing from the public, from boards and commissions, from the people that we interact with, that there are things that, that are difficult and is there an opportunity to push down certain decisions to lower, a lower decision-making point, so council to planning board or planning board to administrative, these types of things, and that's really been our philosophy as, as we've gone into this project. I also wanted to bring to your attention things that you've seen in the last year that had not always as their primary purpose, but certainly a secondary purpose of providing more predictability and streamlining, if I can use that word, and those were things like the accessory dwelling unit approval process, the use table, other amendments that we've had and maybe Carl and Lisa will cover some of those as well, but I just wanted to give you that broad perspective that we recognize that there is a balance between accountability and providing sturdy guardrails and at the same time providing good governance and using staff's time efficiently, using your time efficiently, making things predictable for the public, and that's the spirit in which we're bringing this forward tonight, we do look forward to your feedback on things, it is a helpful reminder that this is an early stage where it's useful to get all the thoughts where we can, and so that's where we are, I'm happy to answer any questions in that context.
Is your hand up?
Oh, no.
Okay, and sorry, now's your chance to ask Brad all these questions.
I'm not going anywhere, though.
Anyone on the, at the dais have a question for Brad? Laura, do you, Laura, do you have a question for Brad?
No questions, thank you.
No, I heard a no, but it was very faint. Okay, Brad, thank you very, very much.
That I'm happy to, I'm not sure who's starting, so Lisa's start.
And just two, two little housekeeping items, one, our goal tonight is to wrap up by eight, if we possibly can, my goal is to wrap up by eight, if we possibly can, and what we're going to have is presentation in segments and at the end of each segment, we'll stop and have questions, which enable us to go back and forth, take it away.
Right, all right, good evening, planning board, I'm Lisa Hood, senior city planner, really nice to meet with you in person, this is my first time seeing you guys in real life, so it's nice to be here and I'm excited to talk about these process streamlining updates that Brad already gave a great intro for, so the, the purpose tonight is, this is an informational item, informal, you don't have to take any action, but like Sarah alluded to, this is a really great opportunity to make an impact on what we ultimately draft into the ordinance, and so this is a really good time, really good timing of this check-in, make sure that we're aligned with what you want to see change with these updates and then also if we've missed anything that you'd like to add, things like that, so like Brad mentioned, we have done some initial analysis over the last few months of items that we think are opportunities to streamline processes, but I know you all talk with people and hear things, so you might have additional ideas, so yeah, really looking forward to hearing your feedback tonight, this ordinance right now is scheduled to come back to you as a public hearing, so an actual ordinance that you'd look at, at the end of February and then go to city council at the end of March. You would have seen in your memo, we have five key issues for you tonight, four of them are kind of the topics that Sarah mentioned, we'll stop after each one to discuss, and then the fifth one is whether you have any additional key issues or other things we hadn't gone over. Brad already gave a great intro to this, but since I went through the trouble of putting these cute icons on the slide, I'll go. So city council gave this direction at their 2023 retreat for staff to investigate potential policy or code changes that can make development review processes simpler and more predictable. Like Brad mentioned, council members and staff do hear challenges about the duration of land use approvals in Boulder and permit approvals, and then we also have the boards and commission analysis work that's going on, looking at the work that you all do and the increased workload that the appointed members of boards like yours are dealing with, and so all of this is really informing why we're here today. Brad also already started talking about this, but
You stole her thunder, Brad.
It's okay, but just to highlight the process improvements that we've already done through the work, you have seen Carl and I a lot in the last year, but Brad mentioned the transition to online phone and in-person staff and staffing updates that have happened for just P and D S services, and then a ton of code changes, so we went through the site review criteria, which made things more predictable and descriptive, we had the accessory dwelling unit update, which turned it into a one-step process and created a much simpler approval process for them, we had the multiple ordinances of use table and standards, more uses are now allowed by right, we had the ordinance that extended the amount of time that a land use approval can be valid before it expires, which provides more flexibility for older approvals, especially during COVID. We also had zoning for affordable housing, which provided flexibility for more housing types, and then finally, most recently, the residential growth management system, which council voted last, last week to remove, so that will reduce overall permit time as well. The engagement plan for the process streamlining ordinance that we'll be bringing forward to starts today, so this matters item engaging you all and your expertise in these topics, we're also going to have some stakeholder meetings next week with applicants, we're meeting with some applicants that are frequent flyers, lots of applications, lots of experience, and then we're also meeting with applicants who maybe have only experienced our process once, just to hear about their experiences and their ideas for opportunities to improve these processes or where it's already working really well, we're also looking at that. And then we'll go through the public hearing process with, like I mentioned, bringing the ordinance to you in late February and then city council in March, so this all is intended to be a consult level of engagement. Like I mentioned, I have divided the presentation into each of the key issues, so I'll kind of give you some background on the specific development review process that we're focusing on, and then some of the analysis and data that we've looked at over the last couple months that informed that, and then some of the potential changes that staff has come together and brainstormed, how could we improve this or streamline it or make this go faster? So I'll start with planning board call-ups, which is obviously very influential to you, and I just wanted to create kind of a flowchart, I know you see call-up memos, they obviously start, they're on your agenda every time you see it, but I just kind of wanted to walk you through how that process works, so staff takes in an application, does all the analysis, makes the decision, writes the memo that ultimately shows up in your agenda, and then you all decide whether to call it up or not, and only one planning board member has to want to call it up for it to be called up, if it's not called up, then that staff decision is just final, if it is called up, then you all schedule, or we schedule a public hearing for you to hear the application and make the decision yourselves, and then any decision of the planning board can be called up by city council, so there's kind of two levels of call-ups, but we're really focusing on the planning board side for this. Over the last couple of months, we've been doing some data analysis, so we looked at all of the applications that have been brought to you in the last five years, so I think Sarah's the only one that would have seen all of these.
And I remember them all.
Yeah, yeah. Because we were interested in seeing what types of applications, not every application is subject to call-up, so we wanted to see which ones are you seeing the most of or do you not see very frequently, and then which ones are actually called up ultimately? So you can see from the graph that those floodplain permits and wetland permits actually account for over 40% of the applications that are brought to you, but if you look at the data on how many were actually called up, we've only, other than last week, had one call-up of a floodplain permit, so that percentage is only 2% of those call-up memos that are written and brought to you are actually called up. Use reviews are also a common application that's brought for call-up, that's the next key issue, so I won't talk too much about that here, but just looking at overall, only six applications were called up in those five years, so it is something that I think the total number is 172 applications that you have to review the memo and look at and decide whether to call up or not, and only six of those rose to the need for the actual call-up in the public hearing. So our staff has been getting together and brainstorming opportunities for potential changes after looking through this data, and so these are some of the initial ideas for each of these sections, you'll see the little graphic at the bottom, which is what we think, who, who it will save time for, so this call-up, these potential changes could potentially save time for planning board, for staff, that's the S, and for applicants. But the potential changes related to call-ups, well, first I wanted to just note that call, that call-up opportunities do add time to the development review process, so each of those memos takes at least two hours, maybe more, depending, that's the simplest case, for each, for a staff member to write, and then there's time to review it, the time that you all spend to review your agenda packet, things like that, as well as just getting on a planning board agenda adds at least two to four weeks, and that's just for, for call-up, not even for the actual public hearing when you're being scheduled, so it does add time to have that call-up potential to the overall process. So some of the ideas that we had were to evaluate the call-ups, the applications that are currently subject to call-up and look at the benefits and drawbacks of those most frequent applications, especially things like the wetland and floodplain permits, whether there is much benefit to having that call-up potential, or whether there's more benefit in having that process more streamlined, and then looking at all the other applications that are subject to call-up as well and trying to weigh that, so not any particular recommendation on which ones right now, but just that that would be a potential change is to amend that part of the code. Another idea, another idea that was brought up was potentially requiring more than one planning board member to call an item up, when city council does call-ups, they have to have a majority agree to call it up, so it's not just one member, so that was just another idea of a potential code change that could impact the number of items that are called up. And then finally, this isn't really a code change, but we also have been discussing as a staff, the improvements that we could make internally to how we write those memos to make them more standardized and have some more standard practices that could make the drafting of the memos go quicker. So that's all the background that I have on call-ups, so these are kind of my discussion slides for us all to discuss, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the question for you is whether you support changing any of the call-up procedures in the way we've talked about.
Can I suggest you go back one and have those four items so we can comment on this? Okay, who would like to go first? George.
Thanks Lisa, quick question for you, of the six out of 172 call-ups that were agenda, how many of those six resulted in a change from what the item actually, so, so I've seen a lot of, some call-ups and they just, okay, they get called up and then nothing changes anyway, so I'm just curious of the result of the six call-ups that were called up?
Yeah, I know for sure that the floodplain permit was just approved exactly how it was originally presented, I'm not remembering the exact details of the site review amendment or the use review, but I can look into that and have that by the time we have the ordinance.
I think that would be informative if, if you know, five out of the six resulted in nothing happening, kind of informs us, you know, how, how that process actually is working and if it's necessary.
Charles, who's listening in says none were called.
I don't know, I've done the use review of one of the restaurants out at 55th and Arap, 55th and Arapaho, see, I do actually remember all of them. No, I think there was one, do you remember, it was a restaurant that wanted more, well, actually, it was a use review, maybe, maybe it wasn't a call-up, it was a use review of John, what used to be John's and is now Fish and Fowl or something.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a call-up, that was something that we actually referred to the planning board because they were operating in a manner that was inconsistent with their development approval, oh, by the way, Charles Farrell Planning and Development Services. And to Lisa's point, we can go back, you know, and take a look at the record, but I think in my recollection, the call-ups that we've seen that have come before, the board haven't really resulted any substantive changes, I think there may have been a referral to dab on one of them, but we can have that information when we, when we come back, in my recollection, I don't think that there were substantive changes, though.
Questions?
No.
Emel?
So I have a couple of questions. I'm thinking about the floodplain and wetland, we, a number of times, the question has been raised, it's like, well, what, what are we supposed to be thinking about when we review these? So I think without having some kind of education around what is it that you're looking for from planning board, those kind of don't really speak to our expertise, I mean, that, those are specialized things, so unless there's a education component, I think that you're not getting top-level planning board input on those would be my thought about that. And generally, I'm, I don't have, you know, the whole document here, but I think you said the requirement for call-up could be removed for those if they're found to have limited benefit to call-up, so is limited benefit defined somewhere?
No, I think that, actually, this kind of ties to the floodplain comment that you made too, a lot of the benefit that applications have by coming to you is that you can use more discretion, you know, you're using, you're making discretionary approvals and decisions, and what's unique about the, or odd about the floodplain and wetland permits coming to you is that those are usually, you know, engineering is usually pretty objective standards, where planning can be a little more fuzzy gray area, so we're bringing something that's already a very objective standard to a board that's supposed to apply discretion, so it doesn't quite fit the way that, you know, some of our other site review where you're really talking about the impacts and, you know, design and things like that, it doesn't work quite the same way.
Kind of like what I was already saying, what kind of input are you looking for? And then lastly, can a member of the public call up something and that just requires one member?
Yeah, so that's a great, that's a great point to clarify, so it's actually called an appeal with, when it's a member of the public, but it essentially follows the exact same process, so a member of the public, they don't even have to be a resident of Boulder, they can appeal a decision within 14 days and then it's brought to you for decision.
Are we looking at changing that?
There, I do have one item on appeals, but not, not substantively changing that, just the, I'll get to it, but
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thanks.
So one of the kinds of call-ups that you listed was site review amendments, right? And I could have looked this up, I guess, but I didn't, I don't understand what, you talk in later in the memo about the difference between a site review modification and a site review amendment, but I still don't understand it. Can you talk a little bit about what the scope of a site review amendment is?
Sure, and I actually have a graphic that I can use, that will be in the future, but I'll give you a little sneak peek, so when we talk about minor amendments later, that I made this graph, so when you have an approved site review there and then there's some amendment, some change to it, there, the applicant has three options, they can either do a minor modification, a minor amendment, or a full site review amendment, and those are cascading in terms of complexity or potential impact or things like that, so minor amendment has, or a minor modification is the smallest change, we have specific standards, I'm sure Carl has them memorized, and percentages that you can go up to with a minor modification, that's an administrative review, minor amendment additionally has standards related to like, how, how much can you change the setbacks without going into the full amendment, and then site review amendment is essentially just a new site review, like the change is so significant that it's essentially just re-reviewing the site review.
That's right, that's perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was helpful. If, so if we were to get rid of the call-up on site, on site review amendments, would there be a situation where someone could basically submit a sort of a simplified or a, an easier site review and then send it in and then get an amendment to, that would make it potentially a more challenging thing from the review standpoint, in other words, something that maybe would be less likely to be approved and and if there weren't a call-up mechanism, then not have any opportunity for, for planning board to review that?
Yeah, and that's kind of how it breaks out now, so, were you going to answer?
Well, I, I mean, a site review amendment acknowledges that it's a large site review in general and that there could be changes associated with it that are, could be quite a bit different from the original site review, so the scenario that you noted is possible, they might get approval for something, a certain number of units or a certain configuration, start building it, and then a certain phase might be completely changed in its orientation where it could potentially have impacts or be quite different than what the public that might have been noticed before was thinking it was going to be, so that's generally something that falls into that amendment category.
And then the minor amendment and minor modification have those limits that we've set, essentially, that would Essentially, that would say that it's not so much of a change that, you know, this would seem like a drastically different project if you thought once it was ultimately built.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just follow up and then Laura, I'll call on you in a second. When um, the development at 30th and Pearl changed the 10-row houses or five-row houses. Into an apartment building, did that have to go through a site review amendment process?
That was a minor modification. Um, the buildings were largely the same in their appearance. Um, there were, it met the criteria for a minor modification. Um, they just made configurational changes within the building. The number of units was the same. Um, it met the criteria.
But for example, given that we now have requirements about types of building, types of units. Would, of housing units, would that have theoretically, could that have been a, a, a site review amendment process?
I mean, I think in a site review, there is a, a criterion that says dwelling unit type is not changed. That's not the criteria in a form-based code. The emphasis is more.
Got it.
On the building, you know, the architecture, the massing, the height, the configuration.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Laura?
Thank you. Um, and I'm sorry, my internet is a little bit shaky, so I hope you can hear me okay and that I can hear your answer. But my question is around um, the public appeal. Lisa, can you describe that a little bit more? Does that apply to all of these types of things that are potentially going to not be call-ups?
Yeah, I believe that, it's, so it's in one table of our land use code and where there's a call-up potential, there's also an appeal. Um, decision authority, that how that's drafted, so um, yeah, it essentially follows the exact same process. Um, where, but the person just has to submit a written um, statement that they would like to appeal a decision that has happened within the last 14 days. And then that is scheduled for a public hearing in front of planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, I have a question and then I think we should give you some feedback on this particular item. The origins of the call-up process, like why, why does it exist? What is the purpose of it?
I think going back in time, Boulder got to a crossroads where every single application could, there was no capacity to bring it all to planning board. Um, so in order to, to deal with that, they, they delegated some of the authority to staff on the approvals, but still. Looped, you know, planning board in on the process so that it didn't all have to come um, for public hearings, just the volume. We're talking, you know, all the way back to like the seventies and eighties.
So it was a, it used to be, everything came here and then they reduced the amount of flow and stopped some things at staff level.
Yeah.
Brett?
Yeah, if I can just add, and, and I didn't really have this conversation with Steph, but I'll just make a personal observation from other places I've worked and kind of what I've. Perceived over the years as a, a standard approach, and that's kind of flipping what we have here as call-ups as being more of an appeal process, so. Uh, and please disagree, we haven't talked about this, of course, but my sense is that it's much more common. To um, have an approval process and then an appeal option. So in other words, it's not just prospectively. Brought forward where you can go yes or no, but it's uh, either brought forward at the initiative of the applicant or in other cases. Uh, the public and there's variations, you know, it can be the participating public or the public at large or something. So at least in my experience, it's fairly unusual to actually have this prospective process. Which again, requires that we write memos, uh, take administrative time, take administrative time for, you know, lots and lots of different capacities, attorney's time. Uh, we are, we have not even contemplated the idea of changing that whole paradigm, but I, I will just say my personal observation is it's, it's kind of an unusual. Paradigm. I don't know if you've found otherwise.
No, I would say I completely agree. I think the appeal, an appeal process is much more common, but you know, an applicant or a, a neighbor can appeal. Um, a decision that they're aggrieved by, um, but the call-up is somewhat unique and that, in my. My impression is that it's often for smaller towns, um, like the, the town council usually wants to be more involved in all of the. Decisions, um, so I've mostly only seen that in fairly small communities.
Good, Kurt.
I'm trying to understand what the practical difference is between those two then. If there's an appeal, then now it can't, things can't really go forward until the appeal time has, has lapsed. And so how, how is it different?
Well, the practical difference, the appeal times, of course, vary. You can set them, but they're gonna be 14 days, 30 days or something, but you're not preparing memos and. Writing up a whole background on something that. Then essentially is useless 90, what, 8% of the time. So we do a lot of work for things that aren't happening.
Right, but I'm sorry, but you're bringing, there's a reason that you put something for call-up, right?
Yeah, and, and I'm not disputing the need and, and nobody's suggesting we change the paradigm for it. That has been decided as a. As a guardrail for, for Boulder. We're just talking about the practical limits, potential limits.
Question, I just, my question was, why do we have call-ups? And because the appeal process would, would be time-limited and if, right, versus a, there's, there's gotta be some difference. There's a purpose to the call-up process and I'm trying to understand.
Well, the only difference is it prospectively asks the decision-makers, do you want to call something up instead of coming reactively from somebody who initiates it? Yeah.
George, and then I'll go back to you, Kurt.
Yeah, well, I was, I was gonna say, I thought Kurt's. Discussion around the site review process resonated with me as something that you want to see as planning board. That's what ML said around flood. And the other, the other, you know, wetland issue, those are things that. I, I don't have any experience with. I wouldn't know what to call up and what not to, so. It's just, it's interesting because I think that there might be an opportunity to maybe eliminate a portion of the call-up type of stuff. Whereas we wouldn't necessarily want to have complete staff discretion in places like major site amendments and things like that.
And I'll add on the floodplain and wetland part that, you know, we met with our engineers and, and attorneys on that subject and we're trying to explore. Why it was even set up in the first place as a call-up and why it gets sent to planning board when there's no discretionary criteria and no one seemed to know, so.
Um, look, so Laura has her hand up. Laura?
Just quickly on that subject of the uh, wetland and floodplain call-ups, does the water advisory board have any role in that? They seem like they'd have more relevant expertise.
I think it only comes to planning board.
Only planning board. Would there be any benefit to having the water advisory board have some role if we don't have call-up there?
I think it would have a similar issue of they're not really discretionary standards, um. But I don't know enough about the water advisory board to make that speculation.
So they wouldn't be able to make decisions anyways.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to, uh, as long as we're, just go through and give some feedback.
I did have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I meant to ask the question before, um. Is there any benefit to the city to have the applicant go know that the call-up process is in front of them? I mean, does it, does it change be, does it change behavior? Does it modify what they might be going after if they know that there are additional approvals and is that a benefit or a negative? Just kind of curious anecdotally what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I'll, do you want to?
I mean, I, if you're asking, does it influence their decision to move forward with a project or not? Um, I think there's an element of uncertainty that comes from call-ups. So it might dissuade them from moving into it. We have talked to people that have told us they opted to not do something because there was a call-up.
Yeah, I know, I know, I was actually gonna say the same thing. It adds a level of unpredictability to them, you know, it's either, and we'll get into this more in the next key issue. Um, it can add a significant amount of time, you know, if it gets called up by planning board, that adds a month. It took a month to get on the agenda anyway, then it could take another month if it gets called up by city council, so it starts to just kind of add up to the time. And then you might end up with the exact same thing at the end or something significantly different, so I think that's the main concern. But I don't think that, I don't, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think it influences like what they put in their application necessarily. And the call, they're, they're not often called up, so um, it's infrequent.
But there, you know, we'll talk more about use reviews in a bit, but I mean, I have heard people that have been, you know, dissuaded from the use review process. Because it is that public process that has a call-up or could go or has to go to planning board. And in some cases, it might be a, a use that totally, you know, makes sense.
But they, they are asking for a variance from the thing that was, they're asking for a variance that's significant enough that it comes to us.
With a floodplain or wetland?
No, no, with any of these. That's, that's why they come, that's why it's coming through. There's something that staff is like, we're gonna hand this, we want.
Not with a wetland and floodplain permit.
I'm not asking, pretty objective. No, I'm asking about site review and use review.
Well, use review certainly is like, it's specified in the use table as a U, so it does require that discretionary review. It may, might work in one location, but maybe not another, and that's why that process exists. Um, site review obviously is, you know, trips the thresholds.
And I think just going back to what you were asking, like the purpose of call-up is. If you had had to have a public hearing for 172 of those, you know, we brought 172 applications in the last five years. So it's to cut down on the amount of um, projects that you have to fully review that would have just gotten approved. Um, so that essentially is the main purpose of call-up and then um, those that rise to the level of needing. Or if you all feel that it needs a, an additional review in the hearing, then it has that opportunity. That's the purpose of call-up.
So I interrupted you before, Kurt, did you have one, okay. Oh, go ahead, ML.
Um, so on the, um. How does staff decide what goes on the call-up agenda?
So the, we have in the table which types of development review applications are subject to call-up. So if you have any of those applications, once the decision is final from the staff perspective, then we have to schedule it on your agenda.
Okay.
Um, and it's easier to schedule a call-up than a public hearing, but it still takes two to four weeks to get just a call-up on your agenda.
So it's a pretty obvious process. If, if you have that little asterisk on your use or, you know, whatever. You know that you're gonna end up in that.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's not, that's not ambiguous.
That part isn't ambiguous, it's just the part about whether it actually gets called up is, they don't know.
Right.
Yeah, and so just to put a finer point, if, if I can add to that, so one proposal would be to take a few of those asterisks off certain types of applications, i.e. Wetlands and floodplain. We could do more if you wanted, but that, that's what we're bringing forward.
Um, so I'll just go ahead and give my, I, I think it makes sense to remove the wetland and floodplain unless we have another John Gerstle on the board. Who actually knows what um, he's talking about. Um, but I definitely think, just my experiences, it's very worthwhile to have the site review and use reviews uh, remain as a call-up opportunity. Oftentimes what happens is one of us will call, say we want to call it up and then we'll get some explanation from staff as to what actually. Is the question and we'll go, oh, you know what, forget it. But I do think it's valuable to at least have that, um, that, um. Opportunity. Um, and in terms of more than one person to call it up. I don't know, given the, given how few things are actually called up, I, I'm not sure that's a necessary additional step to take, but I'm, that's just my opinion. Kurt, do you want to give some feedback?
Sure, well, as the person who distorted your statistics. I will say that I generally, despite that, I generally agree, I think. The, unfortunately, it's a, it's a little bit complicated because as ML said, we, we still, I still certainly don't. Completely understand the wetland and floodplain process and in 939. Uh, the, there is terminology that seems not. Completely engineering-y. It seems somewhat value-laden, like minimization of impacts. And there's something about best management practices or something like that. So those to me do feel like value judgments. Nonetheless, I, I think that the statistics are pretty clear that. Um, that these, the, 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 the benefit of potential call-ups uh, for flood, floodplain and wetland. Uh, applications is not worth the cost, so I would, I would support removing those. Um, I think that the site review amendment, again, it's basically like a site review. And if we believe that site review is a valuable process, which is a separate discussion, then, then as I review amendment, it seems like should be. Certainly should be subject to call-up. The use reviews, I, I'm, I guess I'm somewhat in a slightly different position than Sarah. Um, I. I think there are places where use review call-ups would be, certainly be appropriate. I would love to see fewer of those stars on the use table. Um, and I do think that requiring. Um, a majority or maybe three people on the, the planning board to call up. Um, would make sense. I mean, I, I, I completely 100% trust the. Planning board that we currently have, but you know, there could be a planning board. The, uh, or one member at some time who kind of abuses the process and that would be unfortunate. So I think having, at least requiring more than one would be appropriate.
George?
Uh, sure. A few, uh, one, one, one other question I have for you before I give my comments. Um, can you talk about, because I, I was looking at the different percentages, right? There's a use review, a site review, the other big chunk was final plat. You talk a little bit about that and the importance of that.
Yeah, so actually the final plat is unique. Um, Hella could probably add more to this, but there's a state requirement that it has to be brought to planning board. So that one is not really um, in, in the running for being removed as a call-up.
It's, it's a charter requirement as well.
That helps, um, just solidify that. Um, and then, yeah, that's it. I mean, the other ones are, are, are minor components. Um, I'm kind of in the camp with, with Sarah, I think, and, 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 and with Kurt as far as uh, use for, uh, site review. Um, I, I think use review is important. What we can, we can debate, should the use tables be further changed? But either way, if they are, use review is still gonna be important. Um, if we've elected to only put certain uses in certain places and there's a change, so um, from that aspect. I, I think one person from planning board, um, as it stands now, it doesn't seem like. It's a material process change to what's already occurring and I don't know that there's really a savings in time and, you know, in reality. Um, so I would leave the, the effort of leaving that in and I would think that just with the removal of. The floodplain and wetlands, that's like almost 70% of the call-up memos and staff time that are dedicated to that and other people's time. I think that's a, that's a great saving, so I'm, I'd leave it like that.
ML?
Um, I'm pretty much in agreement with exactly what George was talking about here. I think that the floodplain and wetland can go off the call-up. Um, I think that the site and use review might still get benefit um, by a call-up opportunity. Um, and I, uh, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not fearful that one person would kind of run away with the process. So I think having one thoughtful person still be able to call up something, I think that that is, um. I, I would continue supporting what we do now regards to that. Um, and I think those are the items. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. So I think um, the person that I uh, resonated with the most was probably Kurt. I agree with everybody, wetland and floodplain, we don't need to be reviewing at planning board. Uh, I'm open if staff want to come back with other categories that they think could be eliminated that we haven't talked about tonight. Uh, I, I don't know that our discussion was exhaustive, so I'm open to having other categories be potentially eliminated when you come back. Um, and I do think it should be more than one planning board member to call an item up. I've always thought that that was a little bit strange that. You know, we, we're a seven-member board and any one member can, can place that claim on everybody's time, the whole board and staff and the applicant. So I do think that if, if it is a thoughtful call-up, um, that it would get support from other board members. And I do think that that is a safeguard against that, that outlier scenario where, you know, there have been boards where maybe one member goes a little bit off the rails. And I do think that that is a safeguard against that, that outlier scenario where, you know, there have been boards where maybe one member goes a little bit off the rails. And I, I think that procedurally speaking, it's good to have more than, more than one person support that call up.
Before you go on, just a thought to Kurt's questions about the value elements of the wetlands. Maybe that's an area to go back and see if there are some actual criteria that can be set. So then instead of, you know, you know, I think it was minimal damage or limited damage. Well, is that 30%? Is that 50%? That might be a worthwhile thing for staff to go back in and examine.
If I, if I could comment.
Sure.
So Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, but my takeaway from the one project that you just called up last week was not so much that you. Thought that the way the design was implemented had too much impact, but that you thought perhaps the decision to have a horse turnaround was unnecessary and created too many impacts. And that's more of a, the whole project design rather than is the design implemented in a way that minimizes impacts? So that, I wasn't quite sure exactly if that's even within our purview to question based on a wetland and floodplain development per permit.
Well, I'll, I'll just respond to that and say, I, I completely agree. I, I don't know whether it's within the, the scope of what is considered minimization. I mean, the argument that I've made is if you say you're going to minimize the impacts. And in order to achieve a particular goal and the goal is sort of, is already achieved because there's, there's nothing to actually be done. Then the, the way to minimize the impact is to not do the thing in the first place. So it gets into this philosophical discussion. But yeah, it is, it is very much not clear to me whether minimization is, is in the context of doing the thing. Or whether it considers basically the no build option, the, the, the. I, I guess we should be careful about getting too much into this item, but the, the memo does talk about the no build option. It sort of considers whether the no build option should be the, the, the course taken. And so that to me opened up the possibility that, oh, maybe that is, the, the context for minimization should include that. But yeah, it's a philosophical question. I don't know the answer.
Question. There's a quick clarification around one person or many people needing to, 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 to call something up. We'll go back to the, the public's ability. So if just one person from the public can call something up. I guess that, that's, that's what is odd. I'm kind of looking at my planning board colleagues to say, it's odd to me that one person from the public can call something up, but it would take a two or three or a majority group from planning board to call the same item up. So I don't know if Kurt or Laura, you guys have thought about that. But I, I'd be curious what your thoughts are on that, because that seems really inconsistent to me.
I think you're going to have an item on that, right? The, the one person appeal.
Yeah. We, I mean, it's not a, it's not like substantively changing that process, but talking about the fact that there's no fee associated with it.
Yeah. So I would just to quickly answer your question, we can talk about it more later, but my answer is get rid of that appeal. I think that that appeal is inappropriate.
Okay, but that's not what they're going to propose.
I know that they're not, that's, I understand.
Okay.
I'm going to propose something different.
Okay. So you don't want the public to be able to appeal.
Right. I think that that is not an appropriate process to have for one person to be able to appeal.
Or do you have, do you have thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, my internet was going in and out, but you're talking about the ability for one member of the public to appeal?
Yeah. In, in, in relation to the discussion that, that you brought up around sort of multiple members of planning board being needed to appeal something, but yet only one person from the public can appeal that.
Yeah, I hope, I hope we'll have more of a conversation around that when we get there. But I, I do think that the people who are probably going to be the most qualified to notice if there is something that seems amiss about a project are going to be the people who are directly impacted. You know, like a neighbor or, or something like that. And it does, whether that should go directly to one person appeals and then the planning board must hear it. Or maybe one person appeals and then it becomes a call up item and the planning board can decide whether to hear that challenge might be a more appropriate process rather than it automatically goes on our agenda.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to item, the second of your five or six categories.
All right. Moving on to use reviews. Thanks, Kurt. That was very helpful discussion, very focused on the points we were talking about. So now jumping into use reviews. So it's somewhat related and you'll see a kind of similar flow chart with your, with this. But just starting off with use review, we've already been talking about it. So I know you're familiar. It's the discretionary review that ensures that a particular use that's proposed is compatible in that actual location. And the thing with use review is that we can add, the city can add standards or conditions to ensure the compatibility. So if you're putting in a gas station, make sure there's extra great landscaping because there's residential use right next to it. You know, very case by case situations. Most in Boulder are the staff decision that's subject to call up. We'll talk about a different situation in the next key issue, but for the most part, they're staff decision first, subject to call up. One thing that's kind of unique about use reviews compared to other applications is that this is where we see a lot of interface with our small businesses. So a lot of our applicants are small businesses applying for their, their use review. What that means is they're less experienced with our process, which makes it challenging. And also they're often not working with design professionals who can draw the plans and things like that. So in some cases with these smaller businesses, it can be a, it can seem like a much more cumbersome process because they've never done it before. They don't do it six times a year and haven't done it in Boulder before. But you're familiar with the use table outlines what's allowed a conditional use, which is an administrative review, use review or prohibited. We looked at the data for the last few years on use reviews. The pie chart and the bar graph are actually the same data, just looking at it two different ways. Looking at what types of uses were most common for requiring a use review. Restaurants and non-conforming uses take up more than a third of the use reviews that we've had in recent years, as well as indoor athletic facilities. That's like gyms. But as you'll remember from the use table project, the module three really focused on trying to make more restaurants allowed by right. So they wouldn't have, you know, the 1500 square foot restaurant falling into a use review. So we've made a number of changes to the use table process that will probably impact the numbers in the future. But for the last few years, it's been about 19 applications for use review per year. And when we were looking at the data, we looked at every application type, how long each of them are taking. Use reviews really stood out as something that were potentially having a timing issue. The median days to approval for use review, and we've heard this from applicants is right, is about 200 days. That's almost seven months from the time you apply to when you get your final approval. And we've looked at the amount of time, you know, there's some amount of time for any application where the applicant has to revise plans and it's back in their court. And, you know, however long it takes them to revise. But even when you account for that, the amount of time that's just in the city's control, the median days is about 150. So that's five months just of city time to process a use review. And so this is an opportunity that we're seeing, you know, we've heard complaints about this, but are also seeing it in the data. So we really want to focus on what opportunities there are with the use review process to trim up that time. Because like I said, this is the, the process that small businesses interface probably the most with. And want to be able to support those businesses. So I made this flow chart, this expands, it's a little bit similar. And I mean, it's similar to the call up process, but it expands specifically for use review. So I'm going to walk you through a use review approval. And so this, this assumes that it gets approved at the end. There's obviously the, the other result that it would not be approved. But the application is submitted. It's assigned a case manager, one of our planners, the planner routes it to all the city reviewers. So that's like landscaping, engineering, fire, city attorney's office, very interdepartmental review. And those are on review tracks. In best case scenario, that initial review, there's no problems with the proposal. That can be approved by all of the city reviewers within three weeks. A lot of times there are many rounds of reviews and iterations where they have issues and the, the staff issues comments. And then the applicant has to revise their plans, things like that. So it can take several months to get through that process. So anywhere from three weeks to several months. When staff completes their analysis, all of the comments are resolved to our satisfaction. Then staff renders their decision. That decision is brought to you all as a call up opportunity. Like I said, that takes two to four weeks. Once that decision is made to get onto a planning board agenda. That's where it splits into whether it's called up or not called up. If the use review is not called up, then the staff decision is final. Something that's particular to use reviews is that after that decision is final, they, the applicant also has to complete a development agreement. So that's a legal document between the city and the property owner that basically lay out the conditions of approval and the official status of the approval of that use review. And that's recorded with the county clerk and recorder against the property. And it says in the code that that can take, the applicant has 90 days. So that can take up to 90 days to complete that development agreement. So that's just an initial, an, an additional step that's added at the end of the process. If planning board does call up the use review, like we talked about, there's 30 days for there to be a public hearing and planning board to make a decision. Like I mentioned before, city council can call up any planning board decisions. So that's an additional 30 days. And then if you make it all the way through there, then you get to the development agreement, which again can take up to 90 days. So you can kind of see all the points in the process that can add time. It can go pretty smoothly. And in the smoothest situations, you can get through a use review to approval in 80 days. So that is almost three months. Am I doing my math right? Yeah. But that median that we're standing at right now is about seven months. So that means we have applications that are taking longer than seven months right now. Some take over a year. So that's why we've been hearing some complaints about that. And so we've done a lot of brainstorming with our staff about what potential changes could be made to the user view process to try to streamline it. And one of the main things we've been thinking about is that some of the, a lot of these use reviews don't have any site changes. So think of like a large CrossFit gym that just wants to go into an existing industrial building. They have no changes to parking. There's nothing outside that you would notice change that use, but we require a use review. So in those circumstances where there aren't site changes, one opportunity would be to process those administratively. So more like our conditional use process where there, and that would save time at several of those kind of decision points, because it would be routed to fewer staff. It wouldn't go to the full interdepartmental group. It would just go to whatever relevant, if there was some engineering issue or if there's no engineering issue, then the engineers don't have to look at it. It wouldn't be subject to call up, so there wouldn't be that potential unpredictability of that, that part of the timing. And then the additional or the administrative. Reviews don't require the development agreement. So that last step that could add 90 days would also be removed in that situation. We also thought about, there could be some new process that we don't have now, an alternative process. Instead of using the conditional use process that where we could review parking or site design issues in some other way. We also thought about limiting, and we kind of talked about that with the star, the asterisk that you guys were already talking about, limiting the types of uses or use reviews that are subject to call up. So that could be saying, non-residential uses don't have to come to call up. Those can just be staff decision or residential uses, or, you know, it could be any number of things, but just further kind of funneling that down to, to streamline time for some of the use reviews. And then also just looking at the development agreement process, it's a fairly unique process that Boulder has to do that at the end. Most other cities don't have the kind of legal contractual aspect with use reviews. And so whether there's process improvements we can do to just make that go faster and be simpler. We've heard from applicants and from staff that that can prove to be kind of cumbersome and it's right at the end of the approval. So it adds this time. So there might be some potential opportunities there as well. So, and we think that changing some or modifying some of the processes for use review could save planning board time, staff time and applicant time. And so that brings us to key issue number two, which is whether planning board supports implementing changes that would reduce the number of use reviews, such as the examples that I had given on the previous slide.
Great. Can you go back to the previous slides? I know we're responding to. George.
Yes. All right. So full disclosure, I live this type of stuff every day because I'm a commercial landlord, not in this municipality, but have like 30 different retail locations myself. And so I get all this stuff at a very deep level and I've seen it cause tremendous pain. On the side of small businesses. Wanted to talk about, you had mentioned the recent changes relative to square footage. And how that might affect the graph that you showed us, because I think that that's really important. Because when I think of small businesses and like change of uses from some kind of retail environment to your restaurant or something like that, you're generally talking under 4,000 square feet or something to that effect. And so I'm curious, the changes that you've already made, how you anticipate that changing what you just showed us.
Yeah, you've actually just a little light bulb in my head went off for another data point that I can get, which is what the size was of each of those use reviews. Because right for restaurants, we amended it so that restaurants under 4,000 square feet would be allowed by right. And then for like indoor athletic facilities, we changed it so that those that are under 5,000 square feet would be allowed by right. So I think we could. Look into the data a little more to see how big of an impact those changes would like in an alternate world of scenarios. How many of those would have gone through?
Because I got to imagine the 24 on that chart, I think was for restaurants.
Twenty six.
Yeah. Twenty six. It's got to be like two that are bigger than 4,000 square feet or close to it when one square footage is calculated. So I think that would be helpful for us to understand, because I, I think from a small business perspective, which is really what I think of Siramon Pops, like the, like the, like the person that. There was that change of use at the, at the Farmica location on Pearl, where they did that, the, yeah, the division there and they have two shops there now. Even I guess, and that's the other, so, so along that line of questioning, right? You had mentioned, either way, it could be a five month process just with the city involved. With planning board involved, sounds more like, more like a seven month process on average. And I understand these are averages. And then I'm not familiar with the development agreement side of things. I haven't, I haven't experienced that personally in other municipalities I work in. So I'm curious how important that is. And are there thresholds for that too? Because I would imagine the square footage threshold for that, I would imagine the development agreement is to put in place to, to use Brad's parlance, you know, guardrails on what someone's going to do. And I would imagine that there's probably also benefit to a square footage threshold there. Because I think the larger the development, the larger the impact, the larger the concern for the community. If we're talking about something that's already by right, like a restaurant that can switch over under the newer regs. Does development agreement need to be put in place still?
Yeah. So the development agreement only applies if the use review was required. So we require them of like site reviews, YouTube reviews, a number, correct me if I'm wrong, Hella's. But so any use review has to get the development agreement. That is one change that we've also been kind of talking about as staff is whether, you know, if we did amend it or change the code so that. The, the, the use reviews that don't have site changes are reviewed in some kind of administrative capacity. Or even if it stays as a use review, maybe if there aren't site changes, they don't have to do a development agreement. The development agreement is, gets much more into the legal side of things, which is why I'm saying Hella's the expert, but it involves the property owner. They have to prove that they own it. It's really like a contract that they're writing afterwards. I'll let Hella explain.
Yeah, it's, it's required for all use reviews, for all site reviews. I think for form based code, we created city manager discretion on whether or not to require a development agreement. And the thought was to have the ability to require it if there is a lot of public improvement, construction and dedication requirements. The development agreement, the, the benefits of a development agreement are that the property owner has to sign it and officially accepts the agreement, the conditions that may be imposed. And the conditions a use review approval is subject to is the specific. Operating characteristics that are described in the application for the use versus conditional use. For example, there may be some conditions in the code. Versus a conditional use, for example, there may be some conditions in the code, but they are the same for all businesses in a use review. What's approved is what was described in the written description plus conditions of approval that are imposed. So. It creates a record of what was actually imposed and that's recorded against the property. And if somebody buys the property, they, they see what those obligations are. Um, if it was just approved, there would still be a requ- a, a requirement because it's a regulatory approval to comply with it. But you would find out about it. From the previous property owner, or if you ask the city if, if a recorded development agreement is in existence, then, then there is. A clear record that, that there are limitations to that, to a particular use that may currently be on the property. So those are some of the benefits associated with a development agreement.
Right, but when you're going through a change of use or something like that. There's all kinds of. There's all kinds of things that, for instance, the property owner is signing off of during the permitting process and that entire.
Yeah, they have to, they have to sign the application. Yep.
I just wanted to follow up on that. You said that most municipalities don't have this development agreement. Do they have, how do they deal with whatever we're trying, whatever problem we're trying to solve with the development agreement?
Yeah, so to clarify, um, I've been looking at several nearby communities and also within Colorado, just making sure because we have state laws that are related to it. And other municipalities might have development agreements, but not for use reviews. So they typically development agreements in other communities are applied to planned unit developments. Or things that have public improvements because there's some assurance that needs to be locked in. It's very unusual for use reviews to require a development agreement. Um, I haven't found, I don't, yeah, I haven't found another community that does it. Um, but other communities, even in Boulder County, I know Longmont, they'll still record something with the um. The county clerk, but it's not a development agreement. It's just kind of a notification document. And it will still show up when you do a clerk, clerk and recorder search. Um, that says there was a use review approval here and go to, go to the city to find the information about it. Does that help?
ML, do you have some questions? Uh, Laura, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry. We'll go back to ML and we'll come to you. ML, go ahead.
Um, I'm just trying to uh, think about. Use reviews that come in with the site review. Uh, but if they didn't have a site review, then they'd be an independent use review. Residential on a ground floor in a mixed use. Those fall under use review. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um. So under. What would happen to them? What would happen to them if we, what changes do you see making to that? Scenario?
Well, in these potential changes, we're kind of only contemplating changes to where there wouldn't be site work. So if you're building a new building that has residential on the ground floor, that would be site work. So that would still be. Um, we're not really, we don't really have. Uh, anything laid out specifically that would change the process for that.
So use reviews that aren't coming in for site review. That are um, addressing residential on the ground floor. And I think that requires a review in a mixed use or other non-residential.
Yeah, there's lots of different zones where that's kind of.
Those would remain um, as a call up or those will remain as a requirement?
As a use review. Yeah, there wouldn't, the, the changes we're contemplating are more for the, the sides, the businesses that aren't changing the site.
Right.
So you, just to clarify what you're saying.
You have to turn on your machine.
I, I, um. You're saying in an existing, or I'm interpreting what you're saying, in an existing development where you've got commercial on the ground floor. Making sure that there's still a use review in place if that commercial switches over to residential use?
Where you're not needing a site review.
Okay.
You're attending to, okay, the use is shifting and we know it's not in a residential district because then it would be a non-issue. Is that still? Would that still come under? A review process?
I think that, I mean, we haven't drafted any of the ordinance yet, so um, we could certainly pull that out. I don't think that's what we were um, envisioning.
Right.
You know, we're envisioning more of like the gym going into the existing building. Um, but maybe for those circumstances, we would still want to have um, some discretion where there are those specific use review criteria about ground floor. Um, or use review standards. Um, so there could be certain circumstances where that still makes sense.
Yeah, I think just in light of um. Us looking for opportunities to create more residential and maybe the owners looking for opportunities to create more residential. You know, those maybe is not something that historically might have happened, but now it might be. Something that. Makes sense.
Recommenting or questioning?
Both.
I'm, I'm, I just have one quick uh, question still. It's, I, I just wanted to clarify about the routing to staff. So currently. Currently, if it's a full use review. Then it goes to some predetermined set of departments, including parks and fire and, okay. And. There's someone like assigned in each one of those departments to look at these things and.
That's like appendix D in all of our proposals where it goes through like.
All the.
Where you see all the comments from all the different departments and it goes through various iterations.
Right, and I've thought about that with site review, but not, yeah, not really with the use review. Okay.
Yes, Brad.
Maybe just some broader context. Um, really the. I call it referral process. I always forget what we kind of call that, but when we're sending it out to those agents, that, that really is the essence of planning. Is what we're, um, our, our function as a department philosophically and in practice is to be a one-stop shop. So we are representing all the, in the disciplines. We're representing all the different departments. But we also want to reach out to those departments and specified individuals or groups within those teams to get. Another level of expertise or have them answer specific questions. Um, there are jurisdictions that have experienced, uh, experimented with the. Army of people around a table each time. Uh, we have philosophically not done that for years and years, uh, which I think is the right thing to do, but. I just bring this up to say. That that whole process is the essence of how we add value to uh, an application and make sure that it is meeting code and that you do the problem solving. Uh, when we reconcile. Uh, competing interest on a property, i.e. the stormwater needs to go here, trail needs to go here, they both can't go in the same spot. Those are decisions and, and actions that are getting done. Daily on dozens and dozens of cases. So I just wanted to kind of characterize like of all the process that you're seeing. My mind, that is the thing that adds value to, to what we do and, and why we exist essentially.
But I. To follow up on that. Yeah, yeah, no, that's great. But to follow up on that, if in the canonical example of the CrossFit going into an industrial space. Why does that have to go to parks, for example?
Oh, we use discretion. Everything does. It's not cookie quarter, cutter, right? Every case. The planner, keep me honest here, says like, no, it, it goes to this, this, this and this person, and it's very customized.
We review the application when it comes in and we look at what they're asking to do. We look at the site, we look at the space. There are some standard referrals involved with everyone. Uh, but sometimes we'll take one off if it just doesn't make sense for them to look, review it. And then we might see that there's another. Referral that might need to look at it based on what they're asking for. So there is some discretion.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought that it was always a fixed set.
No, not at, not at all. And there's literally dozens and dozens of, what's the term we use? Not referral agency, but.
So it's our development review committee.
There we go. Um, and it, it's everybody from who you would suspect like fire and. Uh, parks and those, but it also is occasionally the. State water engineer or the division of wildlife or Boulder County, you know, so it's a long one.
Okay, but the, the message, the, the key message that I'm getting is that, that somebody makes a. Informed decision about which ones it goes to and which ones it does. That's great. Thanks.
All right, I have a bunch of questions. Um, the first is, uh, so you're talking about how the processes take a while, although I don't see a huge difference between five months and seven months. So I, I think it'd be helpful when you all come back to. More fine-grained, which, the ones that are taking an extraordinarily long time, why are they taking an extraordinarily long time? Like, um, and maybe it's the square footage or who knows? Right.
Yeah, right. To clarify the five month to seven month, the, the two months is in the applicant's court. So that's when the applicant has, the city has requested that the applicant update their plans. And that's just the time that the applicant is taking to update their plan. So it's five months of city review time. Seven months total.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Um. So a, a, again, you know, there's the controllables and the non-controllable. So we only control half the equation as Lisa's explaining. But when we bring forward these kind of analysis, we're talking about the part we can control and how this can shave off. Two weeks, three weeks or a couple of months. You know, when somebody, uh, Charles. Like this, I appreciate that. You know, when somebody's paying triple net lease for two months. You know, that can be tens of thousands of dollars. And, and again, it's not our job to, to make everything work all the time. I mean, it's their responsibility. To meet the law. But we also recognize that there's a real financial implication to these things. And so that gets back to my earliest comments about government responsibility.
I appreciate that. So um, that's, so a question I want to ask is, um, and I hear about this from. Residents who are trying to do stuff with their houses, which I realize is not the situation we're talking about here, but. Staff limitations are often a huge barrier for people who are doing work with the planning department. So it would be helpful to understand how much of that plays a role in these longer periods of this, this process as well.
Give me staff resources, like capacity. Fundamentally, uh, and Charles, keep me honest on this, but fundamentally, I would say for the last year, that has not been the case. And I would also say that if it is applying to single, uh, to the degree that it has. Or can apply to single property owners, it's, it's happening to the large companies too. I remember having this conversation about a year ago when. There were some back and forths related to some specific incidents and criticism. It's like, well. You know, you guys are making sure to fast track all the big businesses and I'm here to tell you, if you talk to those big businesses, they would disagree. So. Uh, you know, we are equal offenders if, if.
So my, but I, I just in terms of like, you're talking about. I, I don't necessarily have a problem with streamlining some things. However, we're not, our job is not to. Right, our, our job is not to.
Yeah.
Uh, rubber stamp stuff. That's not actually our job.
Yeah, and I will tell you honestly, I was struggling with the term streamlining. I'm not sure we really, you know. Knew what the right word was. Uh, I used the very clunky description in talking with this staff of. Things in the code that add additional time that maybe don't need to, but that seems like a lot more words than streaming.
So let me just.
Decided something else, but, but I understand your point, absolutely. And, and you know, that gets back to what I said, it's not our job to make. Applications perfect or to um. You know, make exceptions. I mean, the people need to come and they need to comply with the law, but we can also make sure we're not being up tos.
Right, fair enough. Um, I just, and my guess is, my sense, I'm trying to understand. The different inputs that add to, and you've explained some of the, some of the. Processy inputs, but processes are run by human beings. And so that, I'm just putting that out for. If it's a human, if there's also a human being dimension problem here, to be aware of that.
Yeah, just one point that I wanted, so the reason that use reviews kind of have risen is that we looked at the times for every single kind of development review approval. And these stood out as taking way longer than like our minor modification process, which is going to the same people. Um, so something, that's where it puts a little light of what's going on here that we need to investigate more because it stands out among the other application types. As something is making it take much longer than our other application types.
Yeah, and I'll just elaborate too, to say that, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to. Go back to something I said earlier, there's processing, which we've been working on very deliberately for three years. And then there's built-in institutionalized things, and that's what we're talking about today. And that's what I was characterizing earlier as we, we already were working on processing and we'll keep working on processing. We're committed to. Uh, process improvement, constant process improvement. What we had, at least as it's been characterized to me, what had never literally been um, greenlit by council was to look at codes. And so that's the distinction.
Fair enough. Thank you. Don't, don't go anywhere because I'm sure you'll have comments on my, so the, the, the other two questions I have. Uh, can you go back to the, your four-point, do you think, there, other one? Develop alternative processes to review parking and site design issues. We like skipped right over that as a discussion point. What can you unpack that a little bit?
Yeah, if you have any.
Yeah, it's nothing specific. I mean, we're also open to ideas, but I think. I, in my experience of looking at user views, it's typically the user views that have some site improvements involved in them that often complicate. The review, it maybe adds a lot of time. So it might be something like creating a new process for. Uh, uses that don't require site review or, or site changes. So we're trying to explore whether there's a bifurcation of the process that might. Have a lower tier of review for uses that are just going into an existing space versus ones that might necessitate. Uh, changes on the site.
But what does that have to do with parking, park, like I just quite understand the.
I mean, sometimes there's use reviews where like a useful go into a space and it. Necessitates a higher parking requirement, so then they have to reconfigure the parking lot. And then when they do that, they trigger the landscaping requirements and things like that. So. Those obviously have to undergo a bit more review versus a, a use that just can go into that space and not trigger those things.
And the, the first and second bullet kind of tie together, whether it's more of. You know, whether we use our established conditional use process, which is an administrative, or we could come up with a new kind of administrative process that would. Exempt those um, use reviews that don't have site issues.
Can I follow up on that? So in that second bullet, you're talking about. Uh, applications that only have parking or. Site design changes as opposed to more comprehensive site. Like. Site design, well. It is.
I, I, I think these are just two examples of anything that involves changing the physical site. So the way I think of it is some use reviews. Are essentially, I'm just swapping out one use for another. I'm not changing the building, I'm not changing. I, I am changing the use, so that's why I have to do that, but it's, you know, functionally what. In building permit terms is called a tenant improvement. But there are requirements in the current code that, that that still go through use review. That's as opposed to anything that causes physical changes to the building, either because it's sought by the, by the owner or it's triggered because the use requires more or less parking. Adding floor area or something like that. So that's an addition, that's a change to the exterior, it's a change to the.
The thought here on, on bullet point number two would be an alternate, conceptually, an alternative process. Uh, that would be uh, more robust when there are these kinds of changes compared to. Something that's just, we're putting a CrossFit gym into an industrial site. Okay, so I'm gonna follow up with my last question, which is about public input. Um, so what I'm hearing so far. Um, in the first section and this section is for, for. Probably for some good reasons, is reducing the role of planning board, reducing the places which planning board intersects with proposals. Planning board is also the place where many, many, many public, people in the public come and actually speak about something that is happening in their neighborhood that they are. They are upset about or like or whatever their position may be. So I'm just a little concerned that we take into account these, the, the fact that planning boards cert, meetings serve as a public hearing, as a hearing from the public. But things that matter to them and that we not forget that in the process of trying to streamline things for developers. Or, or small business owners. I think we just have to make sure that we're balancing those interests. Then George and then. And then ML.
Alright, so I've got um. A, a number of comments. Um, and then I'm done.
So you say.
Number one, I think we hit on something really interesting when, when you, when you brought up that graphic with the gyms and the restaurants. Number one, I think we hit on something really interesting when, when you, when you brought up that graphic with the gyms and the restaurants and the square footage stuff. I, I'd really like to understand the impact of the changes that you've just made. Because it sounds like they're super impactful, right? Because that gym was 24 and the restaurants were 26. And probably the 90 plus percent of those cases actually probably fell in that bucket already. And so I just want to be clear that, you know, I, I like the idea of. We've already made, you guys have already made a pretty, sounds like a pretty sweeping positive change that will affect this. And I don't want that to get lost in doing additional stuff just to do it. When we already, you already made the bulk of the change that you need to make with that one adjustment. Um, and it sounds like it did. Um, my guess is that the use reviews will dramatically. Um, shift with the changes that have already been made. Number two, uh, in addressing, um, something that ML said, which I don't know if that was her intent, but I, I want to say I'm totally freaked out. With the idea that we could approve a development, a mixed use development and planning board. And there would not be, uh, with, with retail on the ground level. And then there not be site changes. And then a developer could come back in later and claim, I just can't rent the space because he doesn't want to rent it for below what he thinks he should get for it. And he could monetize that for more apartments by, by converting that ground floor without any use review. I don't know if that's exactly what you were saying. That freaks me out. Um, because I know that those are hard fought processes. When a, when a large apartment development comes in place and there's ground floor retail, that's important to the overall development agreement. And so I don't want that to get, be, be a point where these spaces are subdivided, you know, below at 1,500 square feet apiece. And there could be the possibility of a developer coming in and modifying what was intended to be community serving retail. Uh, to be shifted over to apartments just because it's, um, more financially beneficial to them. I don't know if that's any of the intent of that, but I just want to register that concern. I don't think it is, but it's an unintended consequence depending on how we word things. Yeah, I, I, I'm not a, I'm not a opposed, can you bring up the four things? I agree that if you're not changing the, 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 the physical properties of the site, you want to change a use. I don't, don't think that that necessarily needs to facilitate be a, a use review as long as it's capped by some kind of square footage. Um, as the bargain with the community, um, agree with Sarah's comments around making sure that material changes. And I don't know how we define material changes and maybe square footage is a good place to start. Material changes to use, I think the public needs a forum for that. And, um, the development agreement, it sounds like that's an area, but again. May or may not be need to be tweaked because the development agreements sound onerous to me as a small business owner. As like a restaurant guy who just wants to get my restaurant open. All of a sudden I got a 90 day process to do a development agreement on top of the change use. But it sounds like that's already been addressed. So the question is, are there larger changes of uses where, where the city finds the development agreement? To be important. Um, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm just leaving that as feedback. Um, and that's it.
Sure.
Yeah, I have comments. Um, first of all, I appreciate, um, George's point about the fact that. That, uh, a lot of these improvements based on that graph potentially have already been made. However, that doesn't help the people coming in for non-conforming use or, you know, a lot of others. So eh, there are still plenty of people who I think are hurting. As a result, small business owners who are hurting or potentially unable to achieve. The biz, to, to do the business that they're trying to do because of this timeframe. And so I don't think that, I think we should be very appreciative of those changes, but I don't think that we should let that. We should, we shouldn't let up on these changes based on that. Is, is my input. Um, I agree with a lot of these, uh, as I think do others. Um, certainly, uh, the, the applications that don't involve site changes. I think, um, should be reviewed administratively. I think that would be great, limiting the types of use reviews. Subject to call up, that sounds great. And the development agreement, yeah, it sounds like. It sounds like for some of them, there's already the city manager discretion as to whether that happens for, for certain. For the four, oh, for the form base code, right, right. And so it seems like that could be the case for all of them. If there's something where, you know, staff looks at it and says, oh yeah, this needs a development agreement. Then of course we should have the tool available, but I don't think we should do development agreements. Just because we, we do development agreements for everybody.
ML, do you have any comments?
Um, so, yeah, I, I think this is starting out as a question, but I think it's a comment. Um, I, I generally am in agreement with the direction you're heading in there. You know, I think the consideration of changing a use, um, where there's no site. Design issues that are triggered that would require a more robust process. One of the statements that you have in, um. In your packet is if a particular use is demonstrated to be appropriate to the proposed location. And I don't know whether there's criteria.
Yeah, yeah, there are. In 1915, we have the use review criteria and then certain uses also have their own standards, um, that apply on top of that.
Use that is appropriate because that's really, if they're just trying to switch a use. And I, again, I'm thinking about the residential on the ground floor in those other zonings, um, and. Are there criteria in place that would address some of the, I mean, when you think about. A, a more public use on the ground floor, switching to a private use, that changes. The contextual relationship to its surroundings. So there are implications. And if we don't have criteria in place, that sort of checklist, what's happening? How is this, um, changing how the public might use the area and, and those kinds of things? That level of criteria is what I'm, I mean, I think that's the value of planning board, looking at these kinds of things is to say, okay. What's happening to the public here, uh, as opposed to, is the building still safe? And, you know, does it meet the landscape requirements, et cetera, et cetera? The human aspect, the values. So that's really my, I, and I think it would just go across the board. Do we have the criteria in place that take into consideration kind of the values that are, uh, brought to the table? When we have, as Sarah was saying, the public giving this input and, you know, all the various perspectives of people on planning board.
Right. And my only comment, I, I, um, I'm, I stand with George on all the stuff, comments he made and ML's comments. Um, we did not discuss non-conforming uses at all. Uh, and I don't know whether that's because we're not discussing them, but my experience with, uh. Uh, use reviews for non-conforming uses is it's a very valuable, very frustrating. And often contentious, but a very valuable process to come to planning board. So I wouldn't want to change that at all.
Yeah, that is, that's the conclusion that staff came to as well. Um, so it is a number, we do have a number of non-conforming uses, but. We do think that it's a valuable process, um, it's kind of unique situations when they're non-conforming, so.
So Laura, does that ever hand up, Laura, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, uh, I'll just say, thank you. I'll just say that, um, I think everybody made really great points. Uh, I do want to, uh, uplift the idea of a lower level of review for uses that don't change the physical site. Although I do think it's a really good caution and I wanted to ask staff, would that allow a change from a commercial use to a residential use? As, as folks have asked about.
Yeah, I think that wasn't the intent that we were thinking of, but I'm really glad you raised that point because it's something we could fix in the drafting, you know. Say it's site changes, except changing from a, uh, commercial to residential. So I'm glad you raised it.
Yeah, I think if you could rule that out, that would go, go a long way. Yeah, and, and I think everybody else made great points and I support my colleagues. Thank you.
Alright, great. Why don't we take a five minute break and then we'll finish, we'll go through the rest. So we'll be back at 7:50.
I'm sorry.
We're still on the use review theme. This is non-residential uses in residential zoning districts. So I mentioned many slides ago that there was a different situation that didn't follow the call up for use reviews. And that is, we do have a few uses that automatically require a public hearing. So they're not subject to call up. They just automatically come to you. And so one of those is non-residential uses in residential districts. The others are like oil and gas is one of the other ones. This, this part of the code has been in the code since the early 1980s. We kind of talked about this with the use table changes. That Boulder was one of the first cities to really do mixed use zoning. So in the early eighties, mixed use zoning was a very new thing. And so we're kind of dipping our toes in the water at the time in early, the early eighties. Now we've had 40 years of mixed use zoning and kind of understand the impacts that there might be with non-residential uses in residential districts. So it's a little bit different of a situation that we're in now. You might remember that several of these applications were recently brought to you. There was an acupuncture clinic, a massage therapist going into like existing office parks in PUDs in residential districts. And I think most recently was the school daycare. One that was also in a residential district. So those are the types of applications that automatically require the public hearing. As we've talked about with the whole process, going automatically to public hearing, what we tell applicants is it takes it at least 60 days or it adds at least 60 days to the process to have to come to public hearing automatically. Our proposal, all of those recent applications have been approved. Like I mentioned, over the last 40 years, we've really learned a lot about mixed use zoning. There's only a few limited uses that are even allowed in the non-residential or non-residential uses that are even allowed by use review in residential districts, things like offices, acupuncture, the things that you see in private schools. So it's not like any non-residential use can go into a residential zoning district. It's still dictated by the table, the use table. So the potential change that we saw here was to simply remove the automatic planning board review for those types of uses. And there would still be the opportunity for appeal or call up of those uses. So it's not necessarily that you would never see it. It's said it would not automatically come to you. And that's all I have on that. So it gets simpler as we.
I'm going to ask a question. So that PUD. Yeah, it was a PUD that allowed residential, but was all office space. It was really just a question about what types of uses. It was medic, it was medical and the question was whether massage and acupuncture or whatever would, would be appropriate.
Right.
So I'm not really sure that's a legitimate example. I guess I'm a little more thinking about ideas that I've heard occasionally in the five years I've been here of why can't someone have a business in their house? And you know, that that would be a non-residential use, like a, let's call it, let's say it's a jewelry, retail jewelry business in their house. Versus just working from home. And I guess I, I, I guess I feel pretty strongly about maintaining the residential sense of residential neighborhoods. That's just an opinion I have. And so I'm, I would like to know more about what would be the implications of, or of not having use review of for this, for non-residential uses in residential districts. I don't really. Now that we've changed some of the zoning for residential districts, I just, I would like to know more about what the actual potential implications are.
Sure. So a couple of clarifications. So it wouldn't be removing use review for them. It just would be removing the automatic planning board hearing. So they're a unique use that comes automatically to you. It doesn't even have the potential to not be called up. It has to come to you.
Okay.
So that's what's unique about it. And we wouldn't be changing the U in the table for that. It would still require a use review. And then another point of clarification, we have home occupation standards. So if there's some kind of business in a house, that's regulated by our home occupation standards and there's limitations on how big it can be, like the signs they can have. They can't have employees, things like that. And then another point is that none of these non-residential uses are allowed in our lower density residential districts now. So it's only in our higher, like RL two and above where these few uses like offices can be allowed through use review in the residential districts.
So you're proposing eliminating the automatic board review and it just being administrative?
Well, it would be a use review that would be subject to call up or appeal.
So we're adding a, we've just talked about reducing the number of calls, but now we're adding a call up.
Well, it would be, well, it would be adding a call up, but removing the automatic hearing. So it would just be a maybe if you have a hearing. Instead of a for sure. So and it is a time difference. So it takes at least 60 days to get a hearing because there are only so many items that we can put on your agenda each time, you know? A call up doesn't necessarily take up time. So it's faster to get a call up onto your agenda. So that call up adds about two to four weeks. That the for sure, planning board hearing adds 60 days to an applicant's timeline.
Okay. Well, I'll just, my personal opinion is if we do it that way, then it's still, then we should stick with one, one planning board member can call something up. But I'll go, George.
Yeah, I have a clarifying question. So I'll take that, the, the the office to the spa school or wherever it was as an example. So in that example, that was a conversion. Are we talking about primarily converting existing spaces or is this new uses?
It could be new uses, but the most recent applications that we've had have all been conversion of existing.
So in the case of like, let's say that office didn't exist. It was just vacant land. And you wanted to put a non-residential use there instead of a residential use. Does this apply?
It would. Yeah. And then the use review would be required.
Then the user group would be required.
I mean, what's proposed is the vast majority of use reviews are staff level with, with the ability for call up or appeal. We're just proposing to take non-residential uses in residential zones off the automatic public hearing process.
But in that case, like where it was vacant land, for instance, you'd still need like site review, you, you, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall in this category because you'd also have site review and all kinds of other stuff, right?
Yeah. I mean, you'd have to know how big the building is to qualify for site review and things like that. But yeah, there would be more complexity of that review than just the.
Is this what's confusing me? Cause that example, or is there an example that, but I guess what I don't want to be unintended consequence of teasing, taking away housing inventory for let's say, just pick me a use office space and going against what we've been working hard to achieve, which is trying to balance the, the supply and demand for, for workspace versus housing. And so is there a scenario that you can think of where that would happen where we wouldn't see it in under?
Well, I mean, planning board would still see all of these through the call up process. It's just a matter of whether planning board wants to call it up instead of it just being automatically brought.
Okay.
To planning board.
I think, I think I'm at the level of understanding Sarah was at the beginning, which in that case I would, my, my only comment would be, I would just want it to be available to at least to just be one planning board member that could call it up. But outside of that, like that kind of makes sense. So that's.
And they're also pointing out that there's a criterion in the use review criteria that exists today that is a presumption against conversion of residential to non-residential that can be reviewed by planning board.
Okay. Yeah. Cause it's, it's, I, it's, you know, I'm just looking at the headline and it's confusing. And so maybe that's the feedback is when, when this comes back to be presented, just clarify exactly. Cause I think I'm confused and chances of the public would get confused.
I think because it's an outlier.
Yeah.
It's an outlier in our process and we're proposing to just put it with the rest of the use reviews.
Thank you.
Emma, do anything?
No, I think that what you're trying to do is thumbs up.
I just called you George. Sorry about that, Kurt.
And that's an amazing compliment. No one has ever been that kind to me before. Or can we do comments?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Yeah. I strongly support this. I think when that the massage school thing came to us, we were all like, why is this really coming to us? You know? And so this would avoid that. And so I, I strongly support that. I will disagree with my comrades and say that I think that again, a call up of, you know, more than one person would be appropriate, maybe three members or something. But I may be in the minority about that.
Laura?
I agree that this is a good change. I like making it the same as the other use reviews that it's subject to call up or appeal. And I agree with Kurt. It does not change my views on whether one planning board member should be able to call up an item.
Is that what you need?
Yes, thank you. All right. Done with key issue number three. Are, let's see. So the next, the, for key issue number four, I've kind of grouped several smaller issues. And so I'll go through those quickly. The first is development review extensions. So this is also an application you've seen recently. Most applications, site review, use review, things like that have three years to substantially complete the work. And if they are not substantially complete, they can request two six month extensions through staff. So staff just approves that. If they need more time than that, they come to the planning board for additional time. They have to prove that they've been reasonably diligent in pursuing completion of the project, that they have good cause, things like that. But I think what we've run into with some recent projects is that the code is unclear about what the limits are on that planning board extension. It doesn't say like planning board can extend it for this many years or things like that, the way that it says that about staff. So the, or even when that, that extension starts. And so one of the potential changes to provide some additional predictability in the code would be it's clarifying those extension limits and start times, potentially increasing the amount of time that staff can extend it. We looked at some other communities that have longer extension approved by staff. So maybe two, one year periods by staff before it comes to planning board. And then also there's some opportunities that we've discussed as staff over time with the definition that we have of substantially complete. That also differs a bit from other communities and just making that more black and white. It's pretty nuanced right now. So it can be a little bit more difficult to implement. So that would be the potential change there. Again, this is the result of staff's analysis or views over time, but also some recent applications that you all have seen. Just for some context in terms of the applications, in the last five years, there's been 14 projects that requested 20 extensions and two of those were brought to the planning board. So needed the past the staff level.
Can I ask a question? If you took, if it was just 2020, 2023, how many of those extensions would have been requested?
I'm not sure. I can look that up though.
Cause I just, I mean, it changes something to me, but if most of these are COVID related.
Right.
Maybe we're, we, we identified something as a problem that is in fact not a problem.
Yeah, I think, well, and I, I, I don't think it's a problem with like the number of extensions that we're requesting. It's more that the code we're finding in recent examples, that the code doesn't really set a limit to, or set any guardrails or instructions for what you're supposed to do with those extensions. And in most circumstances, there would be more specific standards for what you're reviewing. So we think that adding that could add some more predictability.
It is, let me, sorry, just one more question. Other than wanting to, other than wanting to get a development review off staff's plate, what is the point of a three-year framework? Just what, what's the value of that?
Having a, an expiration, I think that it's so that these, you know, our codes change over time. And so they have an approval that's in place with those rules at that point. And so if it was 15 years ago and we had totally different rules and now they're developing, it's not really what the public's anticipating anymore. The codes change over time. So it keeps it current.
Like a drive-through, right? You might've approved a drive-through 15 years ago. That wouldn't be.
Right. And then you're wondering how is this drive-through showing up? So it kind of keeps it current with our regulations. And also I don't know if there's any additional.
Well, I mean, obviously the three years is what has been found to be a reasonable time to, you know, move towards completion of a project. I think COVID has certainly impacted projects abilities, but I think it goes beyond that. I think cost of materials has been something in, in recent years that has complicated the completion of projects. So we find that we're dealing with a lot of site review applications where they're panicking to try to get it done and figuring out whether they're substantially complete per the wording in the code. We give staff extensions and oftentimes it's, it's a little strange too, because we, we do bring some projects before the board for extension that were projects that the planning board did not look at as a public hearing before, but is now then having to come to planning board. So it just seemed like something that begged for some flexibility.
Who has questions, comments? Anybody be, anyone just dramatically opposed to this idea?
Okay.
Please move on to number five.
All right. You already got a sneak preview of this slide, but this is the minor amendments.
Sorry, sorry, Emma.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say.
I.
You can't turn my mic off. I, I, I think it's, it's perfect. We encountered that at that one project and it's just like, huh? So I think clarification, two thumbs up. I mean, it's just really nice to see when the problems are getting solved and I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on to minor amendments, we've talked a little bit about that already. But like I mentioned before, there's three levels. There's three different types of amendments of site review, kind of inching up in complexity as you go further to the right. The minor amendment process, we're finding applications are, are having trouble meeting the standards. And so what that means for minor amendment, what that means is that if they're unable to meet the minor amendment, even if they might seem relatively inconsequential, if they can't meet those standards, they're pushed into the full site, site review amendment, which is essentially a new site review. And so that's kind of a, maybe like a, a, a more extensive review than that change really needs. And so looking at our minor amendment criteria, it are standards that they seem a bit outdated at this point. And there's a really specific kind of development that they're kind of envisioning with those minor amendments, more of our planned unit development many decades ago. So we thought that there would be opportunities to look both at the minor amendment and also minor modification standards and make sure that that's really capturing those minor changes that we don't think have a material impact on the character of the development that's been approved. But that those changes that are, that do have significant changes would be falling into the site review appropriately. So kind of just checking those thresholds and making sure that things are falling into the right buckets that they should be. So that's the potential change here is to evaluate and modify the minor amendment standards to ensure that those small changes are falling into that and, and also in the minor modification standards as well.
Yeah, go ahead. And then Emma.
And what is the process difference between being a minor mod and a minor amendment?
So a minor amendment can be called up. And then, right?
Yeah. Minor amendment is a site review. It just has a cheaper fee and it has a smaller scope of criteria that apply to it, but it's still a site review. It has the call up and appeal associated with it.
And then the minor modification is purely administrative. So staff is the final decision.
Okay. Okay.
Emma.
So if I understand what you're saying, what you're looking at changing is you're looking at changing the thresholds. Is that correct?
Well, it's changing the standards, which establishes the thresholds of which one they fall into.
Can you give an example?
Sure. So I've been looking at some other communities. This is pretty common for other communities to have kind of like a minor amendment process, but other communities and some of our minor modification criteria, it's usually, it qualifies as a minor modification if the setbacks don't change by 10% or something like that. They can't be larger than that. So there's usually a threshold in that standard of what can be approved as a minor modification. So we haven't done the work of looking at those actual changes.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We have a meeting with staff tomorrow to talk it through. But yeah, it would be looking at those and seeing what those lines need to be.
Okay. So giving more definition. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So, so site setbacks prompts me to think about setbacks, which I don't normally think about on a day-to-day basis. But you know, one of the purposes of setbacks is light on, what do we call it? Solar?
Solar access.
Solar access. And you know, a 10% modification could actually have pretty significant impact on solar access. Now I realize that it's like a Rubik's cube and this piece moves like this and whatever. But I just, I would, I know you will all be cautious, but to think about the implications of the minor modification, not just on the applicant who is asking for it, but on the surrounding properties. Cause I, it could have a very significant impact.
Yeah. Projects still would have to meet the solar access standards. And, and if it's the exterior of the development where it impacts a property that's off-site, you can't modify the, the setback in a minor modification, for instance.
Okay.
So if it goes to a minor amendment, there would still be, and they want to change a setback, there would be public notice for that. And again, still have to meet other standards.
Okay. And I would also say that this, this reinforces for me the need to have site review amendment call up. If you're moving more things further, you're changing the standards. So more things fall into just admin, into administrative processes. Then the things that are above that standard really need to be call up options, opportunities would be my take on it. Laura?
This all looks good to me. Thank you.
George, anything? George is speechless. Okay. Any other comments before we move on to, we have anything?
I'll just say I approve also. I, I think it's a great idea.
There's only two left.
Okay.
Okay. So now we've gotten to appeals, which we've talked about a bit already tonight, but any interested person can appeal mini development review decisions within 14 days of the decision, as we've talked about. They're pretty infrequently filed. We don't see them very often. But one thing, when looking at other communities processes versus ours that we noticed stood out was that we do not require any fee. So in other communities, when there's an appeal, typically there's, it's usually a fairly small fee, not anything exorbitant. But a small fee that kind of, the, the person appealing has to pay in order to cup, essentially cover staff time. And so one of the potential changes that was brought up to, was to charge a small fee alongside those, those appeals for, for that staff time, but not material changes to the appeal process.
What, what do other communities charge?
It's usually like less than $200, around $200.
Go ahead.
So I guess the question would be, I understand the, the 200 bucks to, to cover staff's time, but I'd be concerned about someone not filing an appeal because they don't have the means or something to that effect. And it doesn't sound like it would be a material amount of money either way to the city. Cause how many appeals are filed a year?
I think we've only seen a few in the last year or the last.
A few, like less than five?
Probably, yeah.
So it's not a material amount of money. To me, it would just create an impediment for someone that actually wanted to file an appeal. We're not getting a lot of appeals. So why, why, I guess, beyond, I don't know what it would really do. Except annoy the public.
It seems like an equity issue.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I, I am strongly opposed to the fee from exactly the equity standpoint. I just heard on the radio this morning that this is the anniversary of the ratification of the 24th amendment, which eliminated the, oh, it, it forbade poll taxes. And to me, this is a little bit like a poll tax. And so I, yeah, I don't think that the fee would be appropriate. I guess my question would be, how many communities have this process at all? Apparently some do, but is this standard that one person can call up the decision?
Looks like Brad wants to.
I was gonna talk about.
Oh, yeah. Well, we had already kind of talked about it, that the call-up procedure is a little more unique, more unusual, and appeal processes are more typical in other communities. And at least other communities that I've worked, it is just one person, but there is a fee, which I think the intent with that is to make sure that, you know, they're serious about that appeal.
Nuisance call up.
Yeah, yeah, they're not just appealing everything.
That's part of what I was gonna say too, is, and you know, there's a philosophy that these are service fees and it does cost, obviously, staff time and such, and we wouldn't recover the full amount, but just mostly so people aren't doing it frivolously. And I think there's a legitimate discussion to be had about what an interested person is. So that could be a person that you know, attended the hearing or wrote in a letter or both, or you know, you wouldn't have to have it just be the public at large. I mean, there's variations that we can bring forward.
So one other possibility I'd like to throw out there is instead of having it be one person, have it be a petition of five people or 10 people or something like that. And that would also reduce the number of sort of nuisance appeals, but if, if there actually were constituency that was interested in the appeal, you can get the signatures, there's no cost, so it's equitable, but it would make sure that it wasn't just one.
Maybe I can suggest a variation on that. And that's maybe we just survey a few other jurisdictions to see what they do. One, one just thing that comes to mind with that idea is when you know, you have one project that affects four people and another one that affects 500 or has got everybody's attention in town. Any number kind of feels a little bit arbitrary more than one at that point. So I don't have a solution. It's just an observation that five could be a huge threshold for something that only perceptionally affects three people around a particular project versus one that affects 1,000 people in their minds.
So I'm going to turn to Laura in a second, but my alternative suggestion would be, like you said, a number of appeals that a person can submit before it becomes a nuisance, they become a nuisance submitter. Which I, I don't know, I've never. No, seriously, I don't think we have a problem with nuisance submitters. So, but if that's the, if that's the problem we're trying to address, then let's create a barrier to someone who just willy-nilly is filing appeals and get away from the equity issue. Laura?
I, I think this is a complicated subject. You know, I had thrown out another potential solution to avoid nuisance appeals, which is that any one person can appeal it, but then it becomes a call-up for planning board rather than it being automatically a hearing for planning board. That would not avoid the problem if you have a planning board that is you know, dead set against hearing appeals or has some kind of prejudice, but hopefully you've selected your planning board appropriately that they could recognize a legitimate community interest that, that needs to be heard through the appeal process. That, that's one solution. The only other thought I have is that this seems quite similar to me to what council is struggling with, with people being able to basically file complaints against council members, ethics complaints. And I don't know if there's some parallel there to how they're trying to avoid nuisance ethic complaints and to our planning process, but maybe that's worth looking into what kind of solutions they're thinking about.
Yeah, George.
I think we're trying to solve something that's not a problem. And I think we need to move on, is my opinion. We've got lots of problems. This isn't one of them. I think when this becomes a problem, it should be revisited, but until then, I don't think we should solve something that's not a problem.
All right. Any other additional comments?
I'll just add that I agree with adding a fee could become an equity issue, so let's not, let's not go there. And should this end up with the idea that maybe it's going to take at least two people to file an appeal? At that point, I would say, I would anchor that to how many people on planning board it requires to, to take. Because right now I think that the public can do it with one and makes sense if the planning board can, but if the public can needs to have two people, well then I would carry that over just as a a concept, kind of like we have the same rights as the public.
All right, thank you. That's helpful. Last one. This is public art. So this is something that's been brought up. I think city council has, or some of the council members have brought up this as an issue that they've heard about. But on public art, on private property, so artwork that's on private property, not on public right-of-way. There, the artwork is subject to our accessory structure standards, which can prove limiting and increase approval time for something that includes public art. And so one example of that is the setbacks for accessory structures is 55 feet. So if you want to have artwork closer than that, you have to go through a different process. So this is kind of a simpler change than what we've been talking about and doesn't impact planning board necessarily, but just looking at ways that we could simplify the approval of artwork, either exempting them from, or exempting it from setback requirements or reducing the requirement for artwork or any other opportunities. We haven't gotten too far into what those changes might be, but just trying to keep that open as something that, one of the opportunities that we want to look to improve this project.
Does artwork on private land, public art on private land have to be evaluated by any other standards than meeting setbacks and?
That I'm aware of. No.
No. So then I would, my own personal response to this would be reduce the the setback requirement, but don't eliminate it. Because God knows what somebody thinks is art and they'll put it up. You know, you just don't know. Seriously. Well, no, no, I mean, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking actually about my brother's house in Washington. It's a town home and they share a front. And the next door neighbors put up this giant brass hand. You know, it is on their property, but it just seems like there, you could end up with some conflict.
So you have to look at art at times to make sure that it's not trying to sell something or that it doesn't qualify as a sign. But yeah, but I think we might have to have some guardrails as to what is art.
Oh, that's a sticky wicket. That's a very sticky wicket. Laura?
Does it have to meet any standards around things like height or solar shading?
I mean, we would look at it like, like today, we would look at it like it's an accessory structure, depending on how it's designed and it would be subject to height limits, setbacks, I think shading as well. I mean, for something large.
So if you modified the setback that would not affect, you know, the height or the solar shading, that it'd still have the same requirements?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So I'm thinking that we're talking about the front yard setback. So I, I would, I would think that looking at an option to a front yard setback could be reasonable. There should be some thresholds insofar as impeding of a sidewalk or public, you know, things that overhang or that. So I think that there could be some things that you could, you could say a 10-foot front yard setback or something. But if it's like no front yard setback, then I think the thing to protect is the public passage.
Is this a problem? I mean, no one's asked the question, is this really a problem?
It has been.
Like with what?
Yeah, I, I've gotten literally no less than two in the last couple of months that have kind of fallen into this. And so these are people that you know, have a house, and I didn't mean to catch off, Carl.
Oh, okay.
Have what you would call a residence and yet there's lots of yard art, or maybe there's not, and some of it's for sale and such. So this is just trying to create some guardrails around that and, and, and simplify it when it is overly complex and create clarity where there, it's not complex.
Okay, so this is, I'm confused. So this is not removing guardrails, this is creating guardrails?
I, I would say a little bit of both, right? Because when people have come in and argued, well, this is just, this is not a commercial setting, this isn't commercial, but yet it is, you know, from a zoning determination, then we can say that, you know, that's a guardrail, but there are many instances where it's not. I might be speaking out of school here.
There, and I, I know, I've heard complaints from time to time, but you know, accessory structures in the traditional sense are meant to be setback more than the principal structure. So typically more in the backyard. You don't want a shed in front of a building. Where it gets kind of weird is if you have a building that is allowed to be at a zero or a 10-foot setback, and all of a sudden they just want to put some art near their entry, our 55-foot setback is going to say, no, you can't do that.
Looking to differentiate between
an accessory structure and art?
Well, that's movable.
Oh, no. Yeah, the code doesn't give us that.
Oh, so, so, okay, so, so that's helpful. So what you're proposing is actually a separate public art thing outside of an accessory structure.
Right, so creating.
Whatever, you haven't defined it yet, but you will define that and present that.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because if it's not a structure, doesn't, I mean, yeah, cool.
I assume that if you put art on, for instance, a fence, that would not be considered art?
It'd still have to be in compliance with the fence standards also.
Sure.
So we would, yeah, we'd have to.
But like the fence standards have a very, it's only an 18-inch setback or something like that, right? So this is, I'm just saying, if we're talking about a 10-foot setback for the art, then, and you want to just paint a mural on your fence, then that it's, would say that you couldn't. So I just want to make sure that we don't get into a sticky problem with that.
Define it. So that's something we're at, you know, looking to put that flexibility in the code, but also, you know, define it better so we know how to deal with it at different circumstances.
Right, yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I, I certainly support this and my, I, I would, I would go with what ML was saying, which is, I think, what she was saying was minimal setback, but certainly make sure that there aren't obstructions of the sidewalk, for example.
I'd like to be the person who is the arbiter of what's art or not. Yes, I'll be in nine-six-two, ask Sarah. Don't put that in the record. Okay.
All right. Well, that's it for the key issues that I had teed up, but I also wanted the opportunity just to open-ended, if you all have additional ideas for process streamlining or things that you've seen that from your perspective, maybe aren't working efficiently or could work better, or things that are working well. Just really open, open to other ideas. These are what, from our staff and initial analysis, we thought rose to the top, but we are definitely here to hear if there's other items that we need to focus on as well or look further into.
All right, Laura has comments.
Just a quick one. I don't know if this fits in this particular code amendment process, but one thing that has come up several times in our concept reviews is differing opinions of what is required in a concept review. And I don't know if there's a way to standardize more a template or a set of here is what is required for a concept review so that we don't have different people thinking that different things are, should, should be happening.
Do you like me to take? I have never not heard this debate in my planning career. And, and so here's the balance we try to manage is we don't, we don't want to create a lot of upfront costs for an applicant to an extreme amount, and yet we're balancing that enough against having enough detail that we can provide meaningful content or comments. And that's true whether it's a staff review or, you know, planning board review. The challenge, if we start asking too much of the concept plan in very practical terms, is the more money people put into things and the more energy and time and commit themselves by purchasing and whatever, the more emotionally attached they get to a particular design. And it becomes much harder at that point to say things like, hey, you need to rotate the, or you know, we think the, you would solve problem X by rotating the building 90 degrees, or you would solve problem Y if you reduce the mass on this side of the, of the site and increased it on this side. Because they've already now started doing engineering, they've started doing things that have real cost implications by iterating with architects and engineers like that. So I would advocate, it's very, very important that we maintain flexibility in that. We do have some minimum requirements for, for concept plans, so there's some continuity, but you know, finding that sweet spot is, is hard and, and I think it's important that we maintain flexibility around that.
Can I just raise a point?
What, can I respond to that?
Sure.
I just want to say I absolutely sympathize with where you're coming from, Brad, and I am actually fine with less. Like I am fine with not having materiality. I'm fine with not understanding the roof line or exactly how things are going to go. I think that is the kind of input that we can give at concept review. And so I like knowing that there are certain minimum standards. I would like to know more about what those minimum standards are so that I can judge and say, did they meet them? Okay, then I'm not gonna have an issue with that because they met the minimum standards. I, I think it'd be good if, if we all knew what those minimums were and I, yeah, I support not asking the applicants to do too much at the concept level. It gets too cooked, it's hard to, to back out of that.
Yeah, and just to clarify something, I, I meant minimum submittal requirements than standards. That's a more accurate description. And maybe that's a difference without a distinction. I just want to be clear.
So I will note that over the period of time that I've served, what we have gotten has definitely specificity has declined over time. So at some point prior to COVID, the concerns you've raised were perhaps not as as front and center as perhaps they are now. I mean, so I just, it'd be interesting to unpack a little bit, perhaps not here, not now, but to unpack a little bit how it is we've had that decay.
Yeah, Charles or Carl might know. I mean, maybe that was the result of some deliberate change in emphasis or something.
Not especially, I mean, I think it really, you know, we've seen this over time and I've seen it with every iteration of planning board where it swings too far in either direction. There was a time where we were almost getting, excuse me, site review caliber concept plans. And it felt very disingenuous to the board because it felt, you know, like it was already cooked. You know, and then we've seen, you know, cocktail napkin sketches where scratched their head and said, I don't know what I'm supposed to do with this. But in kind of tracing the lineage of the the process back, and it was very intentional to span that gamut. And the way that it's been explained to me all these years is that site review is a very time-consuming and expensive process. So we need an inexpensive and efficient way to solicit feedback from the public, from staff and from the board. And our applicants know that if you submit a more detailed concept, you're going to get more detailed responses. In the case of the concept that we did last week, it was such a huge concept that sometimes an applicant is just trying to see what way the wind is blowing. So for them, it's less about the materials that are going to be stuck on the facade. They recognize that they're going to have to make significant refinements as the process wears on. I think for a lot of applicants that submit less detailed concepts, it's really just about taking the temperature of the community, taking the temperature of the board and really highlighting, you know, key issues from a regulatory perspective on the staff side. So I guess I conclude by saying it was very intentional. I recognize that it can be frustrating when, you know, you're looking at massing diagrams and, you know, a site plan. It's like, well, I don't really understand how this could, you know, evolve into something. But I think our applicants actually really appreciate the process and the flexibility per, you know, Brad's point. and the flexibility per, you know, Brad's point, um, you know, to submit something that has less detail if they're just trying to get the temperature of the community or something that has um, you know, a much more refined level of detail. Um, you know, to get more detailed um, comments early in the process. So it's certainly not the first time we've heard this, Sarah, but I am happy to share the um, the application with the board, just so you can see what, you know, we're soliciting from the applicants. Um, you know, and again, if it's helpful to have subsequent conversations about that, we're all ears.
Great, that'd be interesting to see. Um, M L, thank you, Charles, M L.
Um, so I don't think that this is as complicated as we think it is. Um, a concept plan or a concept in and of itself by definition is the big picture, right? And I think that if we emphasized, let's get the big picture within its guardrails, and then we'll work out the details, i.e. let's make sure it meets the land use definition. Let's make sure it meets the zoning requirement. So come in within the big picture. The big picture that applies to that site. As opposed to come in, it's not meeting zoning, it's not meeting land use, it's not meeting height, it's not it's not meeting so many things. I I think that if we set a requirement to come in, meet the Boulder Valley Com Plan land use. Start with, start with a given. Rather than everything is off the table, you tell us how far we can go. I think that makes it um, very challenging to give the kind of feedback that they're going to be able to then come back with a finite site review um, when it's, when it's not at the concept. You know, it it, there's too many variables that show up. Um, and it's very, I think, a a concept by definition is the big picture. And, you know, I, what I, what I, and I completely agree with Sarah, in the two years that I've been here, it has declined. What has come increasingly is the big picture is there are no rules. And let's just go all over the map. That's a very difficult position for planning board to give feedback other than you know, what you heard in the past was, there's not enough information here, we can't really, we'll, we'll try to speak to um, things, but there's not enough here. And I would say that if we have the base, if we have a base that we can speak to, and I think that the Boulder Valley Com Plan land use and the zoning are the base. That's where we start from. That gives us the regulations for what and how and where, all of everything. Well, you all know this, right? You're the planning department, but I, we're not seeing that. You know, we're seeing everything's possible. And it's still confetti in the air, and that is difficult. And and, you know, for the argument to come back is it costs us too much money. It's like, hello, we're a city, we have regulations, start with those. Start with the regulations that we have, and that way we don't spend our hours because we do have to review things. There are big packets ahead of time, hours and hours and hours um, of unbillable time on our part, which is fine, we signed up for that, but it's not beneficial, I don't think, to anybody in the long run.
So what I'm hearing, if I can just repeat it, is that maybe there's been a sense that some, maybe even many projects uh have come in that at least on the surface, don't seem to meet the basic requirements of, say, the zone district and bulk standards and those kind of things. And and there's a lot of twisting and turning about, well, we would want to get a rezoning and a this and a this. Um, I I don't know that I necessarily disagree, and and I really would value Charles' input on this. My sense in the limited time here is that people have kind of brought the doesn't fit in this box well kind of project forward. And I don't know if that's just a a function of kind of coming out of COVID and people finding sites where they've got a perspective that this really should work in place X, X or Y, but uh, it it feels like there's been a little bit more of that. I don't know that that's completely controllable under any paradigm. You know, we could talk about more or less uh for concept plans, people are going to kind of bring that stuff forward. I do feel very confident that Charles and company vet that and try to coach people into a spot, but I don't know. Have you felt it a trend in that direction, Charles, the last couple of years?
Not especially, no. Um, you know, again, I think it's um, it really just depends on the concept. Some will always be more detailed than others. Um, and to your point, Brad, it could just be the types of projects, I think, um, you know, that we're seeing. And I think last week's was again, a really good example of um, you know, an applicant, again, I think really what they were after was um, you know, does this have any legs? You know, and I I don't think that they required a a huge amount of detail to to get that feedback. And I think that they found the feedback from the board very helpful. Uh, I think the other thing that I would add um, M L is that you know, a big part of the initial analysis that we do and the criteria and guidelines for the review of a concept plan, the second um, you know, criterion, if you will, is consistency with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and other ordinances, goals, policies and plans, including without limitation sub-community plans and sub-area plans. So that's something that we always provide an analysis on. It's kind of the mainstay of the concept plan processes. Um, you know, the staff's analysis is really designed to um, you know, highlight those regulatory key issues and consistency with the complex thing. So uh, I think that's something that we actually um, do a pretty good job of analyzing each one of the concepts regardless of um, the level of detail or, you know, the level of materiality or building design that um, the applicants come in forward, but.
Yeah, good point, Charles, because I do think last, and I think we all said it last, at the last review um, that we really appreciated staff's analysis because it was pointing out what we were seeing, which is um, you know, there's, there's a lot of uh non, non, um, I don't want to use the word compliance, but uh, not addressing the basic fundamentals of the com-plan land use and and the zoning. So, you know, that, I think you get that point. I I have one more comment and um, or two more comments. One of the things that you're trying to get at is predictability, which, yeah, I'm I'm a practicing architect in the city. I like to know what's what's going to happen to my projects. Um, and so I think to that end, I think clear definitions and criteria. You know, can't, I I know, I remember when it's just like two months, when I was on the board, we were doing um, a lot of the legislative reviews on some of these processes. And had I known, had I been, had it been two years later, I think I would have had different input because it is important to make sure that we understand, that the public understands what is the criteria, what is the bottom, and maybe on concept planet, it needs to be more clear. Meet our Boulder Valley land use, meet our zoning. Um, and then we can talk about the wiggle room. You know, but you've got to, you've got to start with acknowledging that these, that these regulations are in place and that, you know, we've gone through a lot of time and effort to put them in place and and, you know, let's, let's start there. Um, secondly, and I think Sarah brought this up, the idea of um, do the development applicants have access to staff in a timely manner? Because again, I'm a practicing architect here in the city, and my little tiny projects, you know, under eight hundred square feet, they can take months and months. And so if an applicant has um, is subject to not getting access to the staff, I think that's something there should be a part on your spreadsheet, how much of this really is, they're waiting. They're waiting to get a meeting, they're waiting to um, get response, they're waiting for some information. Um, and maybe it it it, I know, I know, Brad, you said that the big projects and little projects, you're, it it's, it's not like it, it just is a, is a situation, but I think that that, I know for me and my projects, it is a factor. And I get it, you know, you've been understaffed, we've had this and that, beyond, just keep, keep your eye on that ball because I think it does have um, a place in the way the projects, the projects play out. And I think that, I think that's all my, all my additional comments, but I just really love that we're going through all of these things and that you're bringing forth, you know, what have, what you've seen to be problem areas, areas that we could do better at, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I, just a little bit of clarification on our customer service expectation. Once uh, there is an assigned planner or engineer or case manager, you know, our service, uh, customer service expectation, Charles, I might need you to check me on this, but I think it is that there be a, some sort of response within twenty-four hours, even if it's, I don't know the answer, and I need to get back to you a little bit later, but um, you know, I think um, some of what we've continued to lean into is this question of initial accessibility, and that's the making appointments for inquiries, inquiring uh, through phone and things like that. We we know we've got some work to do on that, but we've uh, we've got statistics, we've got that our business and sports services division has done a really excellent job of providing metrics, and we know that we're trending the right way.
Thank you. George, would you?
No, I I really don't have many more comments right now. I think, I think it's, I think it's great that we're going through this. I I only caution, and I think, I think everyone's just exuberant, whether it's on council or public or us or the city, whatever, whatever's going on. You know, people want changes and they want fast, and I would just, I would just, I just want to take stock of the changes that you guys are are already making and make sure that we acknowledge the pro, the progress of what you've already done hard work to put in place. Like that restaurant and gym thing, we, when we parsed that out, it felt like the bulk of the work is already solved within the problem that was presented. And so I would be supportive of staff pushing back to really, to to demonstrate what you all have already done and are doing and to make sure that we give ourselves as a city enough time to collect data so that we're not making changes to things that we've already made changes to, but we haven't had enough time to realize.
Sure, a couple of things. Um, just quickly going back to Laura's point, I I I I agree that it would be helpful either to clarify whether, oh, what level of detail and spec- specificity is appropriate in a compl- in a, I can't talk, in, in a concept review or if that already exists, uh, help us to understand that, getting to M L's point, um, certainly, you know, consistency with the, the Boulder Valley Com Plan and the land use map is a requirement. And we all weighed in on that one way or another, which the fact that we weighed in, to me, indicates that there was enough specificity to weigh in on that, right? Nobody said, oh gee, there's not enough here that I can tell whether it is consistent with the com-plan and the, and the land use map. So I I think that those are kind of different issues. Um, certainly, the, this consistency is a it, that, that is something that is a requirement, but I feel like we're getting enough um, enough detail in order to meet that. One other thing, I was talking to someone who deals with this sometimes, and they were saying that and this is not really a code thing, I guess, so maybe it's not appropriate here, but the, the, with every application, you have to fill out and a a land use review and plus whatever other thing you're doing, like concept review or site review or whatever, and they felt that that was redundant. Um, but that, that's not a code thing, I think, just a process thing. The one code thing that I want to bring up, which is probably not appropriate here, but I'm going to bring it up anyhow, because Lisa kind of opened up the door, is the voodoo donuts problem. Um, and as we all recall, the voodoo donuts problem. As we all recall, um, the voodoo donuts had painted their, their building voodoo pink, and then they had to repaint it because the sign code says list colors as the definition of a sign includes colors. And um, then it was deemed to be too large it for a sign. And so at some point in Kurt's world, the word colors would come out of the definition of a sign, because if a building is painted, you know, a particular color, and it happens to be somehow associated with whatever company or person or whatever is in that building, to me, that just doesn't qualify as a sign. And perhaps more importantly, it doesn't qualify, it doesn't strike me as something that is annoying or, you know, uh, overbearing or anything like that. So, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I clearly missed that reference that Lisa made, but happy to. It's all good, yeah. No, it's all good. Um, I I can tell you that every jurisdiction struggles with the sign codes uh, I've submitted are the most complicated zoning codes that that exist because they're very hard and they're being made more hard by some uh, relatively recent Supreme Court cases.
I tried to scroll through it in the code and I'm like.
Yeah, it it's hard.
Scrolling and scrolling.
And the 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 bottom line is, nobody likes what they don't like, but they, but they do like what they do like, and we get asked to regulate that. And and what we do know is when you look back in time and you see uh, the landscapes and the streetscapes from the nineteen sixties and such around the country where it was just a free for all, um, people don't like that. And there is this legitimate concern about an arms race where everybody gets the flashiest, most colorful, most uh, because signs by definition are supposed to get your attention, but and everybody's trying to outdo each other, it just becomes a a communal blight uh, is is kind of the consensus. But where do you draw the line is the question? And really, that corporate architecture, um, the, the, the envelope is pressed every time. And um, so we do try to create some parameters around that, and that same oh, the pink building would have been fine in this context, becomes the, how in the world did you allow that giant yellow bubble to be built? And um, and it's like, well, we can't say no to that and yes to this, because you've got to have one set of rule. So there are nine dash two. So there are these times where what seems like common sense, um, uh, it should prove, you know, should, should be an easy thing to call. It it just is not, and we are put in the place of having to make those zoning determinations. One of the first weeks I was here, we got a mural proposal, and it had things on it that represented food, and it was for a grocery store, and is that promoting the sale or not promoting the sale, yes or no? And so we have that conversation. There's a not-to-be-named pizza place not far from here that opened recently and put pizzas all over the wall, and we're having a conversation with them about that. So um, you know, we, it's a balance, and all I can say is that uh, staff and the attorneys have worked really, really hard to create a code that uh, creates um, insistency, and and it's super, super hard for, for sign codes. And I've, for what it's worth, I've had this conversation with a couple of council members too, so I, we we get it.
I appreciate.
And I also have worked in places where we've also had to have them repaint their buildings. So it's, we're not the only ones.
Uh, Laura, Laura, do you have a comment?
I have two quick comments and one question. First comment, Brad, thank you very much for that explanation of the struggles with the sign code. That was very enlightening. Um, second is a question which is related back to the concept review uh, discussion, which is does staff ever tell an applicant, no, you may not bring that concept to planning board because it is too far off of our code? Or did you just gently explain to them what shenanigans it would take to achieve what they want to achieve? Sorry, I'm being a little indelicate, but do you just explain based on the code, what maneuvers would have to happen to make what they want happen and advise against it?
Um, I can take that one, Laura. I think the answer to your question is yes. Um, you know, it kind of happens both ways. There are times when, you know, an applicant wants to float a radical concept um, that is so far beyond um, kind of the regulatory pale. Um, you know, that will advise them. Um, you know, and I think a good example of that is relo- You know, and I think a good example of that is relocating the B Moka building up to, you know, North Boulder on the corner of Broadway and Violet. It's a very compelling concept, but it violates every single stitch. You know, the underlying land use, the zoning, you know, it's inconsistent with the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, but it's a really compelling idea. You know, so I think that's a great example of something that, you know, we counsel the, the applicant that, you know, this is really outside of the parameters and, you know, guardrails that have been set up in the code, but you know, the process is set up so that you can float the idea and see if it, you know, gets any traction. There are other times though, where I've had to sit down with an applicant and be like, I just don't think this is a great use of your resources. You know, to float this concept because, you know, X, Y, Z reasons, but if you want us to move it forward, you know, we're compelled to do so. So there have been times where we've had, you know, applicants do a better job of refining applications and resubmitting them. Very rarely do the concepts go away. They might just come back in a bit of a, a more refined form. So but I think the, the process is really set up in earnest to, you know, help people explore concepts that are kind of mild to wild. So, but I think the B Moka example is a pretty good recent example of something that was radical that we brought forward.
So that's a great example of something radical that you brought forward. So it sounds like you don't, you don't really say to folks, this stops here, we're gatekeeping, you may not proceed, this is too wild, this is too beyond the pale.
Not especially, no. You know, again, we'll advise applicants early in the process that, you know, if a concept again requires, you know, rezoning all the way through annexate, you know, if it, if it hits every branch of the tree and it just doesn't look like, you know, it's realistic from a regulatory perspective, we'll say that. You know, and we'll help them understand what the, you know, implications are from a resource perspective. But if somebody submits an application, you know, we're, we're required in effect to bring it forward, but we will counsel an applicant.
I think that's really helpful for us to understand that just because it made it to planning board, doesn't mean that staff supports it and that you are trying to counsel applicants about why their concept might be quite difficult to achieve. I think that's good to know. And then my last comment, I just want to, kudos to council for opening the door for you folks to identify these process improvements. And kudos to all of you for bringing forward these suggested changes. I'm really excited to see what you come back with. And I'm really grateful that you are going through this exercise of trying to make this process easier on all of us and eliminate some unnecessary red tape. So thank you so much.
Okay, I'm, I'll get the last word. I'll take the last word, I guess. My only comment based on the conversation we had today was the one thing I heard that I think was on which there wasn't like real shared interest or agreement is how many people are needed for call up. And my suggestion to you is that you contemplate setting that question aside until you've kind of done what George talked about, which is figure out the changes that you've already made and that you're proposing to make. What, whether or not that's likely, I don't know if you can figure out likely, but what are the implications for the number of proposals that would be coming to us as call ups anyway? Instead, and just maybe park that specific question of the number of people needed for a call up until you've sort of worked all these changes through the system. Cause I think that could be a, an area of contention for something that otherwise sounds like it, there's not a lot of other areas of contention. That's my own, my suggestion. Okay. Are there other matters after this, not this three hour matters? Oh, we have a matter. Go ahead, George.
I, I wanted to bring up, I think it was something that was brought up with how, uh, I don't know, nine, eight, nine months ago, something like that. I think it was something you brought up, Sarah. Around when we have public hearings or public comment, just figuring out a way, if it's appropriate, to ask the public their relationship to the project. Because what experienced in the most recent hearing was it took a little while to get from two of the, two of the six people that were in favor of that project to realize that they had a financial relationship with the developer. And, and there may have been more, but we didn't suss it out as a board. And I'm concerned that at some level our public hearings may be getting impacted on one side or another of a project by people that are motivated beyond just their citizenry and their, their, their willingness to speak their mind. Because they are connected in a financial capacity to the people that are putting up the project. So I don't know if or how we have that ability, but I wanted to ask you, Hella, is there, I, I know we, we brought it up about a year ago, but I, I don't, I don't think we've ever done anything about it.
Yeah, actually, I think that back in the day when Lori was here, she actually worked on that and she developed some language that you guys used for a while at the beginning of a quasi judicial public hearing, asking people to make that disclosure. And I think it goes towards credibility, I guess, and how you evaluate the, the testimony that's being provided. If somebody doesn't disclose or or is untruthful about it, you can't really do anything about it, but I think back and, back then you decided you were going to ask it and and evaluate the statements that we are going to get based on what was being said.
Would it be possible for you, do you, do we have that language?
I think I have it somewhere. I'm going to look for it and, and send it to you. Yep.
Maybe we could actually, if we all agree with the language, that we could always update it or revise it, is to add it to the agenda item, to the agenda that says when, when, if you're speaking at a public hearing about a project, you will, we will be asking you to whatever this, whatever the language is. And then it can be reiterated by whoever is chairing the meeting. That'd be great. Any other matters? Okay. It is nine, nine oh three. I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
It's eight oh three.
Thank you guys very much.